Second-best three-point shooting team in Power Conference country.
Dan, I will tell you right now, that's not something to take apart.
Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 9th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Araza.
Here.
Lancy.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Chantet. Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwe.
Here.
Seron. Vocal singer.
All right, next would be reminder to please speak directly in the microphone. If you come up to use the podium tonight, just adjust the mic so we make sure you can hear you, make sure you can see the little green light on the mic. Next would be item three, approval of minutes for March 12th, 2024. Anybody have any comments on that or can I get a motion?
All are moved.
Motion by Sulfah.
Second.
Second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then item four would be items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything for this evening?
No.
And we will have two items for executive session?
Yes.
Both of those? Okay, thank you. Up next is item five, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for anything not on the agenda? If you'd like to come up and just give us your name for the record and then use the mic.
My name is Ellen Canouts and I live on 707 Houston Street here in Batavia. I am here to express my concerns regarding the proposed Ashton Ridge development on the Siemens property, specifically the single-family portion of the proposal. The density of the proposed development is high. Not only is Pulte requesting that the city allow a change in zoning to R1H, which is the highest density for single-family homes, but also requesting a FAR variance that allows them to build more house than permitted by Batavia zoning rules. There are 73 proposed single-family homes. Fifty-four of those homes will be built on lots that are less than 6,000 square feet. And as a reference, I encourage you to drive past the red house on the southwest corner of McKee and Harrison. This home is on a 6,000-square-foot lot and the size of the home is 1,128 feet. Please refer to the chart below for the size of the proposed homes at Ashton Ridge. Currently, there have been no new developments in Batavia that have been given the designation of R1H. The only non-developed land that has an R1H is owned by Mooseheart. Even the current Pulte development of Winding Creek is zoned R1M. While I feel that the density of the development does not match the surrounding neighborhoods, there is a silver lining, which is that Pulte can afford to remove lots in order to improve the walkability on Van Nordwick and to HC Storm. Currently, the tree-lined sidewalk on the west of Van Nordwick from Windmill countertops to HC Storm has only one spot where pedestrians must pay attention to traffic, which is the four-way stop at McKee and Van Nordwick. And you can refer to the second page of a Google Maps that shows Van Nordwick from Windmill countertops to HC Storm and the tree-lined sidewalk that we currently have and then the single-family portion of the proposal from Ashton Ridge. It would be ideal if Road A, which is parallel to HC Storm, be a dead end rather than open to Van Nordwick. Batavia schools have noted that they will not direct bus traffic that goes through Outlet A to Van Nordwick. The bus traffic will be directed to McKee Street. Additionally, making Road A a dead end still gives the Ashton Ridge development to the north of McKee, that portion of the development, two entrances which are on McKee. With the proposed development, walkability would be improved with fewer driveways. Additionally, more trees lining Van Nordwick could be saved. It has been stated at meetings with the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals that 60 elementary students could be added to Batavia with this development. That makes walkability more important. I appreciate the value of striking a balance between collaborating with developers, develop open land while ensuring that Batavia and its residents benefit from the best possible use of that land. The staff of the City of Batavia and the staff of the Batavia Public Schools have done an outstanding job with this balance in addition to fielding questions from residents like me regarding this development. And I've observed Pulte defending its position to profit as much as it can from its proposed development. In emails of May 2023, Pulte responded to a request from BPS 101 with this response. "The moving of the drive causes us to lose two lots from 73 down to 71. We cannot afford to do this." And last week at the Plan and Zoning Board meeting, Pulte stated that if the FAR variance was not granted, it would be a deal breaker. I find it hard to believe that Pulte would present a plan in August with the same number of homes now proposed and have no room for negotiation. The City Council is in a position to encourage Pulte to demonstrate its ability to negotiate its desire for high profitability with the walkability needs of Batavia residents. I understand that there is a demand for housing in Batavia. Who wouldn't want to bring their family to the best city in Kane County? I did exactly that 20 years ago. It is my desire that this development is the best use of the land for current and future Batavia residents. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Anybody else with anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, well then move on to item six, which is the consent agenda.
Tim Lancy is joining the meeting right now.
Okay. Tim, if you can check your mic as soon as you're ready.
I am here. Sorry for the delay, guys.
No problem. Thank you.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Ordinance 24-05 adds a tax amendment for the zoning code to allow certain uses as conditional use in the mixed-use district. Resolution 24-59-R requests for an extension of the expiration of the final plat for Deer Path and Main consolidation subdivision regulations. Resolution 24-57-R authorizing execution of a contract with Denler, Inc. for the 2024 roadway crack filling project. Resolution 24-62-R approving a permanent easement agreement with the Batavia Park District and the Geneva Park District for permanent easement at Carriage Crest Park for the purpose of installing and maintaining stormwater management infrastructure. Resolution 24-58-R authorizing execution of an I dot resolution to appropriate motor fuel tax funds for the 2024 roadway crack filling project. Resolution 24-56-R authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Moose International, Inc., related sanitary sewers. Resolution 24-61-R approving a contract with Carlisle Utility Contractor to perform 35 KV underground circuit upgrade in the industrial area along Douglas Road in the amount of $69,996, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your Honor, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Questions or comments on the... All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve yes. Hey, item number seven is a motion to approve bid for land west of 841 Morton Street. Scott?
Thank you. This is a piece of land that is considered excess. A few years back, we sold a small piece of the former railroad right-of-way adjacent to the pathway to an adjacent property owner. We've determined that about 15 feet of either side of that center line we can sell because it's excess. In this case, this property owner does have some encroachments onto the parcel, so it makes sense to sell this to them. We did publish a notice in regards to that and we received one bid from the adjacent property owner in the amount of $2,250. Therefore, in order to sell this land, we need a motion to approve the bid and sale of the property that's just adjacent to 841 Morton Street. of the property that's just adjacent to 841 Morton Street.
Anybody have any questions on this? If not, I'll make the motion that we approve bid for the land west of 841 Morton Street. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulph. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you hear him online?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. On to item eight, ordinance 2432, revising chapter four, title four, chapter five, solid waste collection and city curbside collection programs.
I'm also going to be talking with item nine, the memos in conjunction, just to note So on March 6th, the Plan Commission Zoning Board Appeals conducted a public hearing for the proposed text amendments to the zoning code, City Code Title 10, for revisions to the requirements for refuse recycling, grease containers, and compacting equipment enclosures. By a vote of five to zero, two absent, the Plan Commission and Zoning Board Appeals recommend approval of the regulations as drafted in ordinance 24... or 2024-033. Staff has also prepared draft ordinance 24-032 to add a multi-family dwellings, commercial and industrial property refuse section two, title four, chapter five, creating regulations and standards for the pickup and maintenance of refuse enclosures. I will start with the Plan Commission's text amendment recommendations, and then move towards the municipal code recommendations. With the Plan Commission, there was proposed text amendments to the design standards for different zoning districts and properties. Those recommendations are outlined in the staff memo that was in the Plan Commission. Generally, all existing buildings would be allowed to have composite material for trash enclosures. That is something that city staff has been working with applicants and has found that our regulations to have masonry or solid material like brick and concrete was cost prohibitive for existing buildings. In effort to be more friendly, we felt that composite materials have moved... have come a long way, and that it'd be appropriate to consider those. And in several other districts, we have proposed that wood be allowed, that specifically for multifamily, downtown mixed-use, mixed-use, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and the PFI. This would again allow for treated wood to be used for trash enclosures. Our code today does not allow this at all. This is something that we felt that with these lower intensity of zoning districts, it would be appropriate to allow wood material as long as there's metal posts. Again, we're trying to take an approach where we are being friendly and considerate of existing businesses and buildings and finding a way for them to provide trash enclosures that are not cost prohibitive. Also, within this section, there was a few minor changes to the standards, and most of those were to change that the service business district is not excluded from needing a trash enclosure. Under the code today, the service business district, if it has an outdoor storage area, can utilize that outdoor storage area as its enclosure. Staff feels that the service business district, based on how we've been seeing applicants come in recent terms, have not been using it for storage, and that's something that that district is likely to be converted to, let's say, an orthodontist or other lighter services, and they're not going to have a storage facility. So if a new applicant were to come forward for either condition use or a new building in that district, it would be appropriate for them to have a trash enclosure installed. That way, it's ready to go for any future uses long-term. Is there any questions regarding the proposed zoning amendments?
This will impact existing facilities that don't have them, correct?
So the zoning code, in the zoning code, this would provide relief for existing facilities. The way the code's structured today is that they would have to provide masonry, brick, or, you know, like a hardy board material. That is the only option. So if, you know, a condition use were to come in today, we've been consistently requiring them to, you know, upgrade their facilities such as trash enclosures, sidewalks, and other things along those lines. You know, it is difficult, and a lot of times, to match, you know, the aesthetics of an existing building as well, whether it be brick, limestone, or cinder block even, you know, depending on what it is. You know, with composite materials, you know, in the industrial districts in our general and commercial, that would provide a lot more flexibility and color palettes that could complement existing buildings in those districts. So again, the proposed regulations are actually less restrictive for the existing structures, and the zoning code would not require these businesses to install a trash enclosure. That'd be part of the municipal code. They would, you know, again, if they're coming forth with a new condition use or significant expansion, they would have to build one, but not today. You know, it's more if they want to provide one.
What's your questions? Okay, if nothing, then I will make a motion that we recommend to council ordinance 24-2024-32, revising title four, chapter five.
That's 2433. That's the zoning code, sorry. I went a little backwards on this.
Okay. So first we'll take then the ordinance 2024-33, amending the text of the zoning code, chapter 4.1, site regulations, section 4.106, refuse and recycling enclosures. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Sulph. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. That'll be 12-0. Right? And then go back to ordinance 2024-32.
Yes. So staff, in conjunction with the zoning code regulations, we are proposing to add a new section within, you know, title four, chapter five, to address multifamily residential and non-residential property refuse. Essentially, our code does not address standards for these properties and is limited to either the property maintenance code or other very limited tools. It'd be more appropriate to have these minimum standards in our municipal code so that city staff can better and effectively regulate within the community. The biggest things within this section are that we establish, again, baseline regulations such as, you know, the gate shall be maintained in a closed position except for when the contents are being removed, and the enclosure shall be kept in good repair. You know, we've had issues where an enclosure exists, but the trash dumpster is actually not being stored within it, or the gates are open and trash and debris are littering Randall Road because of that. That takes a significant amount of staff time to either track down the property owner and seek someone to clean that up, or staff has taken on themselves to go clean up that mess. And, you know, from a city perspective, small updates to the code could address that. We have established, you know, responsibilities for non-residential properties, and that is to collect trash within a minimum timeframe, essentially without minimum standards. We are limiting what we can regulate. Staff is proposing that trash be picked up at least once every 14 days. Trash is typically picked up at these facilities much more frequent, sometimes several times a week. For restaurants, food establishments, staff is proposing that these be picked up on a more frequent basis. And, you know, should there be issues where trash is overflowing, the city does have opportunities to work with them and require more frequent pickup. Staff is also proposing minimum standards for grease collection and storage, that those containers be emptied at least once every 30 days. The reason for that is that all restaurant establishments and some other facilities have what's called a grease container that is for sanitary purposes and contains grease and other byproducts for that. Some are in the, you know, in the ground and storage, and they can leak into our sanitary system if not correctly designed. Other ones have tipped over and spilled onto other property or within ways of, you know, the public right-of-way, and that's caused sanitary and health concerns. So by having them empty it out, again, this establishes minimum standards so people are not deferring maintenance in, you know, this for health and safety. And then this is the general cleanliness of enclosures. We've established some baseline regulations that then again allow staff to work with them. The purpose of all these is not to go write tickets. The purpose is so that we have something that we can show business owners and property owners that this is the regulations, educate them, and work with them towards compliance. But without this, we are limited in what actions we can take. Staff is proposing hours of operation. Essentially, any person or firm engaged in waste collection would be limited in conducting business between the hour... between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Currently, we have no hours of restriction, so we have... staff has received complaints from residents within the community on both sides of Randall Road, actually, for different shopping centers in recent months, and those complaints have indicated to staff that there's been pickups as early as 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 AM on a pretty frequent basis. You know, staff did research on this, and in comparing with Schaumburg, Naperville, and St. Charles, our proposed regulations are consistent with 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. A few other municipalities cut it off a little earlier than 10:00 PM. However, our residential trash program is 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so staff felt that it was appropriate to be consistent in our regulations and allowed waste removal for both programs in the same timeframe. Another... another thing in this is the removal of refuse and debris. Staff is providing a section that would allow the city, in extreme cases, to remove waste from our property. Staff perceives this as something that if someone fly dumped, meaning they dispose of their garbage and significant waste on a private property owner's property or vacant property, the city could collect that waste, dispose of it, and bill the property owner for that. Or if there was a landlord tenant issue where someone was kicked out or foreclosed on, you know, and historically, you know, sometimes trash has accumulated all this, and if it's a prolonged time and we cannot get compliance from a property owner, this gives, again, the city some ability to provide immediate relief for the residents in the area. Staff is proposing our standard penalty amount, that the fine shall be no more than $750 for each offense. This is standard in how we've enforced across the city for other instances. And again, the goal is not to fine community members and business owners, but, you know, we have to define it clearly for the regulations in the event that it goes that far. And the last item that staff is proposing is to require non-conforming properties located within commercial employment districts, or, excuse me, to require all properties that do not have refuse, grease, containers, compacting enclosures on a property in a commercial employment districts, public facilities, institutional zoning districts, the mixed-use and the mixed-use district, to provide an enclosure to accommodate each container by September 1st, 2034, in compliance with Title 10 of the municipal code, which is the zoning code. This is excluding the downtown mixed-use, specifically because the downtown mixed-use has a significant difference in site development, and each property needs to be taken a close look at and work with the property owners. So staff is proposing to, again, focus on our more intensive commercial districts, our employment districts, which are the light industrial, general industrial, office district, and the service business district, as well as the public facility and institutional, which is churches, government facilities, and fraternal organizations, and then the mixed-use zoning district, which those facilities today already have trash enclosures. Staff feels that by requiring these properties to provide a trash enclosure, it would increase the general aesthetics of the community, as well as increase the general welfare and health of the community. It helps, you know, contain trash and limit it from encroaching on other properties, as well as screening significant blight in some situations. In the Plan Commission memo that was attached to this memo, there are some photos of how trash enclosures do look in portions of our community, and, you know, some of them are less ideal than others. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Abby?
Multifamily, oh, sorry, multifamily zoning districts. So would this apply to residential properties, like duplexes in neighborhoods that are zoned single-family?
Sorry. It'd be applying towards... we only require trash enclosures for when they're not participating in the residential trash program.
Okay.
So it would be... if it's a... in a very limited case, I believe we have a townhome community that the HOA does their own waste removal, but it is primarily focused at apartment complexes that, again, are not participating in the residential program. So this takes into consideration what they're already participating in.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2024-33, amending the zoning code, chapter 4.1, site regulations, section 4.106, refuse and recycling enclosures. Second?
Item eight. It's item eight that you're supposed to be calling off. It was item eight that you were supposed to be calling off, because he did it in a reverse order.
Okay. So then, reverse title, chapters five, solid waste collection and city curbside collection programs. Sorry about that.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. And we've gone to item 10, which is ordinance 2024-34, amending the text of the zoning code, miscellaneous amendments, chapter 2.3, chapter 2.4, chapter 2.6, and chapter 6.
Staff is proposing several text amendments to the zoning code tonight. Primarily, these text amendments were brought out by situations that staff has encountered over the past several months, and that staff has done research and felt that we need to update our code. The first being requiring a condition use for... condition use permit for car washes. Staff has, during a recent review of a potential car wash development, discovered that the current business model and design for the modern car wash uses substantially higher quantities of water than traditionally seen in facilities in Batavia that had previously recycled water. New systems use more efficient nozzles and cannot accept recycled water. The trade-off results in increased water usage and ultimately results in more water being sent into the sanitary system for treatment. Several years ago, Trotter and Associates conducted a study to assess the sanitary system's capacity at individual lift stations as well as at the overall treatment facility. One finding of the study determined that properties along Randall Road and west of Randall Road had significant capacity limitations due to infrastructure constraints in both pipe sizing and lift stations. With most of the general commercial GC zoning district and some of the community commercial zoning districts being located along Randall Road, it would be appropriate to regulate car washes as a condition use, knowing this limitation in the ability to provide adequate utility capacity. In addition to the sanitary utility limitations and general water use concerns, car washes do create increased levels of traffic. Staff, you know, staff feels that a condition use would better regulate these uses in the general commercial and community commercial zoning district. Another proposed change is requiring a condition use permit for banquet facilities. The zoning code currently allows banquet facilities to operate as a permitted use in the general commercial and community commercial zoning district. In a review of potential locations for a potential banquet facility, it was determined that many of the locations provide inadequate fire suppression systems, bathroom facilities, and other building code required requirements for life safety measures. Staff feels that this use should require a condition use permit in the community commercial zoning district to ensure life safety is considered in any approval of a banquet facility. This change in regulation would be consistent with the zoning code for the downtown mixed-use and office zoning districts. Staff is proposing to remove banquet facilities as an allowed use from the general commercial zoning district. Buildings within the general commercial zoning district are designed to accommodate these types of... are not designed to accommodate these types of facilities due to the potential conflict with neighboring businesses and lack of adequate facilities as required by the building code. The general commercial zoning district is intended for retail-focused uses, and the establishment of a banquet facility within the zoning district would provide minimal sales tax for the city. Staff believes that removing the banquet facilities from the... removing the banquet facilities from the general commercial zoning district and requiring conditional use permit in the community commercial zoning district is appropriate. The next is a conditional, staff is proposing to require a conditional use permit for entertainment and recreation outdoor in the DMU. In 2023, staff received several complaints from residents and business owners regarding an entertainment and recreation outdoor facility in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The complaints received by the city were for noise levels, sight lighting, portable generator usage, and trespassing onto neighboring properties. The zoning code defines entertainment and recreation outdoor as public or private parks, playgrounds, open spaces, playing fields, sports courts, driving ranges, not in conjunction with a golf course, swimming pools, amphitheaters, and so forth. Incidental sales, and this was regulated as permitted use in the downtown mixed-use district. After review of the zoning code and consideration of the complaints received, staff has determined that it would be appropriate to require a conditional use permit to allow for more thorough review of a business model and its operations for the proposed use, and when necessary, require additional site improvements to mitigate potential impacts such as fencing, limitations in lighting, or hours of operations. Retail sales and convenience, the zoning code currently requires a conditional use permit for retail sales convenience in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. After review, staff felt that the downtown mixed-use district and would be appropriate for this type of use, and felt that our regulations for parking that were previously updated make this use consistent with the general retail. So we are proposing to make this a permitted use to allow for more convenience store-type businesses to come into our downtown and promote a more walkable downtown. Staff is also proposing a conditional use permit for commercial vehicle and equipment sales and rental, new and used. The zoning code currently regulates this as a permitted use in the LI and GI zoning districts. In late 2023, the staff discovered that the Illinois Secretary of State does not differentiate commercial vehicle sales and general consumer vehicle sales in their licensing process. The city currently requires a conditional use for motor vehicle sales, new and used leasing for general consumers, and staff feels that it would be appropriate to align those, those uses so we can be consistent with the state licensing process. We've had a situation where someone represented that they wanted to sell commercial vehicles. Staff noted that on the application to the state. The state issued their license, and several months later, they were found to be selling general consumer vehicles in a, in a facility that was not approved to do so. So staff feels that after our research, that it'd be appropriate for this to be a conditional use. And then staff is proposing to require a conditional use permit for entertainment and recreation indoor large scale. Indoor large scale is, is permitted use in the light industrial and general industrial zoning districts. This is something that is greater than 10,000 square feet in building area. Staff has reviewed potential locations for facilities to locate within the community and found that many facilities lack the adequate, again, fire suppression system and building code required facilities, such as, you know, life safety exits, bathroom facilities, among other things. Taking that into account, the city staff feels that this should be regulated as conditional use, so city staff during the review can address those concerns and have those improvements made in those facilities, because, again, not all facilities within the zoning district are appropriate for that use. And that is something that without a conditional use, we have limited ability to either know about, or they've already signed the lease, and it's, it's far too late to, to adjust that. So we are trying to be proactive and, and taking the concerns of the community and surrounding businesses. And then the last thing that staff is proposing to update is glossary definition of maintenance and repair services. We are simply removing computers from this definition. This would allow computer repair services and, and like iPhone repair services to locate in zoning districts that are regulated with and allow personal services. Essentially, the code listed in this definition, computers, and it was regulated as a conditional use in many zoning districts because the repair services of office machines, video equipment, and furniture and, you know, and leather goods are more intensive in nature or create smells and other things. But we have found that computer repair services are much less intensive in today's, you know, economy, and we're trying to be proactive and allow these uses to either locate in our downtown or other zoning districts. Does anybody have any questions?
So I think the amendments that allow more stuff into our downtown area, I'm struggling with all these conditional uses, because it, maybe just my interpretation, on the surface it comes across as restrictive and unfriendly, at least on the surface. And I don't know, I don't, I'm not a business owner, I've never tried to open a business, so I don't know if I, like, so, oh, conditional use, forget it, I don't want to even bother. I don't know if that happens or not. But I guess if there's been complaints about this, I can think of one that came across for one of these. But I guess not being aware of, hey, there's this ongoing issue that's, that's been popping up over the last six months, it just kind of comes as a surprise to me that, hey, hey, we have all these problems and we need to shut it down, rather than how do we make it work? Because that's the way it feels to me reading it. And unfortunately, I've been pretty busy, and I really only had a chance to kind of read through it again today. And it just seems like a lot to, in very short order, to make a decision on, that I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight is my big thing, so.
Okay. All right, you were just, if I can note that in terms of the downtown mixed-use zoning district, the only conditional use that'd be added is for the outdoor recreation. The other uses for the downtown mixed-use are actually, we're creating more permitted uses, meaning the convenience store, retail, that's becoming a permitted use. And the computer repair services would be allowed in the downtown, which we've had some inquiries for such uses. Fundamentally, the intention of a conditional use permit is that each property within a zoning district may not be appropriate for that use. The use itself might be appropriate overall, but it should be considered on a property-by-property basis. That being said, in considering any conditional use, you know, some properties have limitations either in their size, some have it based on the conflict with, with what exists as a neighboring residence, and some of it has, has to do with the general location of adequate facilities or other things that could be impacted. So, you know, for outdoor recreation, you know, there were issues where there was people trespassing onto private residential properties. There was noise, there was light at pretty late hours. That's where staff, you know, did proactively work with and try to mediate this. And with that, you know, noting that our downtown mixed-use district, to have outdoor recreation as a permitted use, not all properties are appropriate for it. You know, our park district has the Peg Bond Center out here. That property is ZonPFI, so that would not be a part of the downtown mixed-use zoning district. So again, it is limited in nature for, for that reference. These other districts are generally speaking to our industrial districts or our commercial other commercial districts, just to note.
Sure. It just, like I said, for me, it's a lot to take in, and I just don't have a lot of the context, but like, like, I don't know if there's been several complaints about, like, recreation. Is it complaints that we're getting that, hey, there's music coming from a bar at 11 o'clock on a Friday night? Is that the kind of complaint, which to me, I'd, unfortunately, I'd look at that resident and say, you chose to live in a downtown area, and, and that's, that's a bit of the, the struggle of living in a downtown area. I've lived, I live in downtown Chicago, and, yeah, I would say it was, it sucked at times when it was really loud, but then I'm like, yeah, but I also get to enjoy that because I'm right here. So I just don't know enough about the problems that we've had to be able to make an informed decision and say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, we should make this restrictive. I just don't have enough information.
Yeah, that's fine. And just to note, it's generally restrictive to playing fields. Outdoor music at, at bars and restaurants and outdoor dining is, is separate. So that is not outdoor recreation. Outdoor recreation is more playing fields in nature, so soccer fields, baseball fields, things like that.
I would say, Mark, when I looked through it, to me, it was to, to list out the expectations of, you know, if you wanted to cite a business with X, Y, and Z in it, that you knew that this was the area you could do that in, it was permitted, and this one was a conditional use. You know, so that way you knew as you started to look at those properties from that aspect of it, that you would understand that that was the procedures you'd have to go through, whether or not it was permitted or conditional.
But isn't it just easy, and maybe it's not, neither of these are easy, in my opinion, because it still requires a lot of work, but can we not just have, like, hey, if you're going to, let's move to the banquet facilities. If you're going to have a banquet facility, isn't it just part of the building code that, hey, a bank facility has to have these things? And, and can't we just add that in? I mean, that's what I don't understand.
So there's limitations in that, and Jeff might be able to touch it after I give my little brief, but essentially, if I'm a prospective business owner, or I'm, you know, looking to sign a lease for my business, I can move in and sign a lease at a property, never speak to the city. While that's not something I would recommend, it happens. And they get into a facility, and it could be a room that's a big space like this, but the building might only have one bathroom. And under the building code, there are standards for banquet facilities, about how many chairs and how much there, as an assembly use, how many bathroom facilities they must have. There also may not be sprinklers in the building. They might, they, under the building code for that type of assemblies, they might have to have sprinklers. You know, it could be several months, you know, potentially before the city is aware of it. We're pretty proactive in finding out when new businesses are locating in, per, when they sign up for utility bills, or, you know, our staff finds a signed permit. But in, in many cases, they've already signed a lease. And sometimes with those leases, they're on the hook for that, and they can be signed on for several years, and that's a large impact. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong with, with the process, was that correct from a, a building assembly use? Okay. So it's, it's to protect also these potential business owners as well as neighboring tenants, but it really is to make sure that we're helping these people locate to the correct location. And that's the goal of this. It's not to say no, it's just to find the correct location.
Yeah. And if I may say that, you know, we do periodically look at uses in the zoning code. I mean, that's one of the things that we're required to do under the zoning code anyway, is, is to look at certain things, you know, zoning districts, all the, all the different amendments that we bring to you at some point in time. So this is one of those things, we've, you know, had some issues with some of these types of uses, and we've looked at it and said, you know, we think we need to make some adjustments to the regulatory framework that we do with some of these things. You know, banquet hall, for example, may not be appropriate in every, every place in the commercial, in general commercial or, or community commercial. So we think we should be able to take another look at it and say, you know, this is going to be this, but you're going to require, you know, a limitation on size, or we're going to require a limitation on hours of operation because you're too close to residential areas. So those are things that are hard to regulate otherwise. Conditional use really allows us that leeway to do it either way.
Anybody else have any questions?
The scenario you were just describing about somebody signing a lease, and we don't know about it, so we can't get in there ahead of that, and now they're stuck with the lease, couldn't that still happen even if we have a conditional use requirement, or does that give them an out of their lease?
So it still could happen, but I will say, you know, if, if someone calls the city and they hear it's a permitted use, they still might go and just sign the lease with, and it might still have inadequate facilities, because sometimes they just ask about a zoning district, and then they don't, you know, they will not give up an address. And, and that happens. You know, in a lot of cases, it's, it's simply, you know, general industrial uses that, yeah, it's appropriate to go into either of our industrial, you know, districts. But, you know, we had a church, for example, move into a facility off of wind energy at one point in time. That facility lacked all adequate assembly use facilities under the building code, and we had to unfortunately break the news to them that they would have to find another facility that could accommodate them, because they could not, could not, partially did not want to make those improvements to that facility. And some of that was, again, bathrooms, exiting, adequate fire suppression. And it's very unfortunate for the city to have to break the news to those individuals. You know, we do find that a lot of broker, people work with brokers, and when they find out it's a conditional use, they are very upfront, they work with us, and staff, you know, does give them a pretty accurate estimate of how long it takes for the approval process, and we work to keep on that process and work with them. And generally speaking, it's, it's not too long of a process for, for the investment that they're looking to make in the community and do it right.
We also, you know, for example, the trucking facilities, you know, we had that discussion, we made amendments to the zoning code on those. We had several property owners, knowing that we allowed them just buy property, and just, you know, knowing that, you know, we might have other issues with things going on with them, they just went ahead and bought it anyway. Now, again, the zoning change may not have prevented that, but if they knew that they had to get a conditional use, as opposed to us saying it's a permitted use, they might have had second thoughts on that and said, you know, maybe I'm not going to, you know, buy into that, or maybe I'm going to buy it, subject to getting my zoning approval first.
Remind me again, in the process of applying for a conditional use permit, is there a fee associated with that to cover staff time?
There is a nominal fee for that. I believe it's $500 for a conditional use application. A lot of times, in many cases, you know, conditional uses, if they're doing site development, there's other applications associated with that, and there's, they're already making investments into site design and other, other things. When it's moving into an existing building, it does cover staff time, and the review is, again, primarily focused on our hours' operation, their operational sense, the life safety component. You know, some of that, I'll, I'll use an example, we had grain, grain algae brew stillery. We require conditional uses for breweries and distilleries. The primary reason, because there could be potential nuisance with, created with those types of uses from the fermenting of, of the alcohol. So in order to make sure that that is not conflicting with other adjacent businesses, we have them go through that process, and it also ensures that they have their necessary licenses with the state and the federal government for doing alcohol and that they're authorized to do so. So they went through that process, and they sought the conditional use, you know, and a use like that takes a few months, but, you know, they typically make those, you know, their contracts contingent on approval of a conditional use, like Scott was indicating.
Okay. Other comments? Do enough of us feel confident on voting on this tonight? Anybody say no? I'll go ahead. Make the motion that we recommend the council ordinance 2024-34, amending the Texas zoning code, miscellaneous amendments, Chapter 2.3, Chapter 2.4, Chapter 2.6, and Chapter 6.
Second?
Motion by, second by YaZi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Thank you.
Did you know that Alderman Lancy is no longer in the meeting?
Okay. Alderman Lancy is no longer in the meeting now.
I'll give him a minute.
Okay. So that'll be 11. Excuse me. Up next is item 11, Resolution 2024-60-R, authorizing execution of a fire department staffing study proposal. Chief, coming up?
Good evening. Tonight before you is a request to approve a fire department staffing study that we've discussed before, at a few times over the last couple of years. This was something we discussed in negotiations with our union that had, they had concerns about our levels of staffing, and it's also something that myself and administration have been concerned about with the increase in calls that you've all heard about. We've seen, as you've heard many, many times, vast increases in our call volumes, up to over 5,000 at this point in time, and we're looking just to validate what we feel is need for additional personnel. So we, we commissioned this proposal, and initially it did come in a little more than we had anticipated, but in reviewing other staffing studies done for other departments, we found that this to be a reasonable and a reasonable cost and a reasonable proposal to meet the needs that we feel we need to support our position and also to provide you additional resources and information for more thorough decision and proposal.
Do you have any comments? I know we've talked about this a few different times, you know, how we're going to gauge what know, how we were going to gauge what we thought we needed to do with that department as compared to other departments. And I'll say, just from, you know, the time that I've spent on Tri-City Ambulance Board and been on the council, and this has been, I think, a need for quite a few years, that we needed to actually go outside and have somebody else look at what we really need, or what our demands need, you know, would be. And then we can prepare for that and figure out how we fund that and how we, you know, work into the future with the department. Tony?
How about, you said it's more than you had anticipated. Is more than what was budgeted? Or?
Yes. I'll be honest with you.
How much was budgeted?
Well, just almost $30,000. Originally, when we had talked about it over two years ago, it was in at about $20,000. So, or really, over the course of two years, we've seen the increase in cost almost double. But we had been projected or kind of led to believe it would be close to $30,000. And, you know, I have to say, I was a little surprised it came in at 40. I discussed it with the city administrator and looked and discussed it with other departments. And we found it actually to be quite reasonable. Part of it is that it's being done with consultants who are local and also chiefs that are local, also are familiar with our operation, who've been chiefs or retired chiefs in the local area. So we have, as you know, a unique, kind of a unique cooperative with other departments and things on some supportive organizations, being TRICOM and TRICITY ambulance that also impact. And we have a very strong auto aid contingency within the tri-cities. And that's also something that needs to be understood when they come in and evaluate it. So we don't have the overall travel costs and housing costs and meals that you would get if we went with an agency out of state or farther away at this point in time. So we believe that it's a reasonable cost. But it is, it is over what I budgeted.
You'll absorb it in the rest of the budget and you need to make an amendment?
I've been told by the finance director, who, you know, has a really good, good handle on things, that it was, it was okay for me to bring it to you. So she felt confident that with, actually with my budgeting history, that I would have enough to absorb this particular overrun. Yeah.
Is, we've talked about that. We kind of all know that we likely need to increase, and the union is asking about it. Is there a discrepancy in the numbers that there? Is anybody putting forth numbers saying, hey, we think we need this personnel, and there's a conflict, rather than just saying, hey, yeah, we agree that adding X number would solve this and save ourselves $40,000?
Honestly, Marg, I do, I think that we are pretty close in concurrence with, with the union. And administration's belief that we need a minimum of three personnel. The beauty of this study is it just isn't for immediate needs. It also will help us in our strategic planning and planning over the course of five to 10 years, so that we can work it in to not only the budget aspect of it, but for departmental expansion and the meets, the meeting the overall needs. You guys just heard a long conversation about the increased growth. We're experiencing new developments that are coming in and possibly new senior housing complexes. So this will help not us in the immediate need, but also to plan for the future.
They're going to do data modeling to support the number of positions, so that it will both verify that the number where we think it is, is where it should be. But I think it's important from the taxpayers' perspective as well, to have a third-party validation of that. Because these are extremely expensive positions for the city. But we think they are very necessary, and we know that at this point, that we are understaffed. We just, you know, and we think that that number is three, but the analysis will bear that out.
Sure.
Will this help with succession planning? I know that's something that was discussed when we talked about this before.
Absolutely. Yeah. We're currently going through promotional processes right now. And that's a two, basically a two-year list or a two-year plan aspect. But on the, on the manpower study and aspect, it also figures in for, you know, increase or aging of, of the staff, potential retirements, and part of that promotional succession plan. And it also, in addition, we've, we do need, we believe, and I do feel we need three immediately. But what does that do? I don't want to come in and say, I need three right now, and then come back next year and say, well, I really could have used a couple more. I'd rather have the validation and things to support and allow you to understand what the growing needs are going to be as we not only grow in the community, but as the department grows through the succession plan and who is potentially leaving and when.
Sure.
Yeah.
Is Craig going to be doing some of the work? The reason I ask this is, I'm a little biased in this. He's a former client of mine.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And he comes with such integrity. He did volunteer work for one of his old departments that he did not have to do. And he was driving like two hours for a commute to go work for an old, small-town fire department. He's in the trenches kind of guy. And I couldn't be happier that we'd land a contract like a consultant like him. So I'm ecstatic that we would even get to work with him.
Yeah. I didn't know about, you know, your friendship with Craig. But Craig is, you know, well-known within this area. He's former handover park chief. And he also did some work for us here previously. So he has already a foundation, you know, in the area and knowledge of the Batavia Fire Department, which will, which will lead to some cost savings throughout the process.
In the banking stuff, as I watch people retire, especially from munis, I would say, this is in your blood. What are you doing next? Or I'm sorry, when are you going to form a consulting job? And I knew someone like him would thrive in something like this because it is in your blood. And you want to keep getting information. So I'm super ecstatic.
He's identified as being the lead consultant, the secondary consultant, his assistant is a fire chief named Rudy Horst out of McHenry County. But Rudy's background happens to be eligible. So he very, again, familiar with the Fox Valley and the area and the surrounding departments, and more importantly, how TRICOM and the tri-cities work, you know, interoperatively.
Any other comments, questions? Not I'll entertain a motion from somebody to recommend a council resolution 2024-60-R, authorizing execution of fire department staffing study proposal.
Second.
Motion by Malley, second by Bogusinger. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Posed. Okay. Motion carries. That'll be 11. Move on over to item 12, which is a discussion on Illinois legislation's support of topics within House Bills 5315, House Bill 5021, and Senate Bill 3637. Carrie?
Thank you, Alderman. At the March 26th COW meeting, city council members did request that we bring back these topics to discuss the items that city council would support and these pieces of legislation. Now, following that meeting, I did ask council members twice to give me a list of those topics that they would support. And I've tried then to incorporate the comments I received into my memo in support of tonight's meeting. So really, I think, I mean, I don't have much to present other than what's in my memo. So I'll go through it really here. The citizens' appeal process, that was one of the topics that was brought up. And I went into the various sections of the legislation that allow for citizen appeal processes through the Illinois Power Agency or the Illinois Commerce Commission. Revisions to the Open Meetings Act, that's primarily in House Bill 5021 and 3637 in the Senate. And I touched on that as to what the revisions in that language would be. Integrated resource planning. And again, at least one council member expressed support for the overarching concepts. Another member expressed support for resource planning. So again, those are in 5021 and 3637. And then finally, items specific to House Bill 5315, which is the Solar Bill of Rights. Three members of council have expressed support of 5315, with two of those members citing that some revisions would be needed. And at least one council member has expressed support that would require utilities to perform a non-binding financial analysis to better quantify the costs associated with conversion to renewable generation sources. And then finally, one council member supported the model of net metering and a single statewide renewable generation policy for all municipals and co-ops. So that's a quick summary of my memo. And really, I think tonight is more about city council talking about the items within the legislation that they support.
Hey, who wants to start?
Well, I can, I'll point out, just based on, you know, what we see here in terms of what staff has found out in terms of the status of these, it certainly doesn't seem like 5021 and 3637 are really even on the table right now, anyway. So.
Right. That's true.
You know, I don't think that really is, we've already discussed them, but I mean, really, is there any need to really?
I think, I think what we wanted to do, or I think what was, to me, aired at that meeting was, is that we wanted to not only go in and say what we didn't like about those bills, but we wanted to come back with something that we said, okay, if you guys are really serious about pushing these bills through at some point, these are the things that we would support, that would be okay with our utility or, you know, our ratepayers, you know, what we thought were good things that were in those bills, you know, and be able just to have that statement. So it wasn't just a negative going towards them, that there were actually some positives going back towards the legislature, so that they would, you know, understand that it wasn't just a flat-out no to it. It was, we don't like these things for these reasons. We do like these things for these reasons.
With the caveat that we can't, we do like certain things. We don't, we don't like other things, but we can't support the bills as worded because you have to support, you have to either support or not support them in their entirety as drafted. That's the tricky part.
Right. And that's the, that's the hard thing that it's always been with legislation is until you actually know what they're ready to vote on, it's very hard to do that. And that's why, to me, the opposition was so important on that, to stop them for this session. So that way, they didn't get to the point where we didn't know what got changed in them by the time they vote on them at 2:00 AM.
Which is my concern all along.
Right. Tony?
I guess, after spending a little more time looking at all this, the, one thing I'm seeing that's good with this is it forces us to start planning. You know, we don't have a plan. We've got a situation here. Of course, our situation is different than the rest of the, not the rest of the state, many other places in the state. If we had a plan in place that said how we were going to be moving to more renewable resources or energy, maybe it wouldn't be as necessary to have some things put in place. But we don't have that. You know, we don't, you know, there's no document we can point to that says, hey, we're going to start taking advantage of renewable resources where we can. You know, the times that we're buying more than what we're getting from Prairie State, you know, why, you know, have we looked at maybe exploring that?
You have the full authority to do that, though. All you need is seven of your fellow council members to vote yes, that you want to do a plan, and you can do a plan. You don't need to run that plan past the Illinois Power Authority. You don't need to run that plan past the Illinois Commerce Commission. You just need seven fellow council members to say yes, and then you can do a plan.
And I would point out that part of our strategic action plan does have that element in it. So you, as a council, have already decided that that is what you want to engage in. And as well, we have the UIC capstone project that's, we've taken the first steps toward that.
I'll just say with regard to that capstone project, we, we're meeting with them weekly, and it is wrapping up. So you should expect some updates from us probably within the next month or two on that. And the work they've done to go through our electric utility, the age of some of our equipment, we're very happy with where they're going. And that'll give us some really detailed information on how we need to update our grid and specifically a lot of the distribution infrastructure over the next several years.
Abby?
I would second what Malley said as well about requiring us to have a plan. Hopefully, seven of us, if this legislation doesn't go through, seven of us will get together. I know it's in our strategic plan and require that to be something that's done at regular intervals. And I also like the idea of having an external expert look over the plan, because I think that is helpful to have another set of eyes who's independent of us, look at it, look at it holistically, look at it from the perspective of the state goals, and be able to give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I think that's also a really good part of that, of that proposed legislation. And I would also call out that it would be a great point to add into our next letter to our legislators, that it, should something like this go through, that exempting the project-based agencies would be a smart move so that NIMPA doesn't have to do it, and the City of Batavia has to do it, so that it's not duplicative efforts.
Right. And I think that that is important, that we identify those things that, not only that we just don't like, but things that would duplicate cost or raise costs, you know, for our ratepayers, that might be something that we wouldn't naturally do or normally do, you know, without their input or without our input on it.
Ian?
So first, I would rather have the person be more a partner, though. I'd rather have someone we can invite to the table and have them be more active in the discussion as opposed to do a report, hand it to an agency, and have them approve or not. It feels like it's more organic if we're able to select a consultant, someone we've worked with, someone we're comfortable with. Who knows what we're trying to accomplish as opposed to get an analog yes-no from, from another layer of government that we didn't pick. Is, you know, Springfield said, you have to do it. It does hold us accountable. I definitely get that. But then again, some of the things that we wanted to do, we couldn't do anyways because the technology doesn't even exist for it. We don't have batteries to store some of the power that we like to generate from some renewable resources. We haven't had the ability to sell power outside because we were losing money on the deal. We couldn't do anything anyways. The timing is, is good for something like this. I get it. But I still would like to be on, on record as saying, and it's current form doesn't work for us, so at least gives us some, some power to negotiate as this thing moves through its committees. I'd rather be more nimble.
And I think we have to be very flexible to be able to say, okay, all of a sudden, some new technology comes out that we have to be able to be ready to take advantage of. We have to be able to, you know, whatever plan we have can't be one locked-in plan for the next 30 years. It has to be something that we can look at on a regular basis and make a decision based on what's happening, whether or not that's something we need to try to do, or that's something that, you know, we don't want to be forced to do it, but we want to be able to have the option to be able to take advantage of things as the technology changes, as we get closer to shutting the plant down, as we get closer to switching to, you know, renewable energy. All those things have to be taken into account. We're not going to be able to do that all ourselves. And we, I think, because of the unique positions we're in, the different cities, the different entities that are all part of this, have to be able to be able to do what they need to do for their ratepayers. You know, somebody out there might have a great infrastructure set up already in their city or in their co-op, that they don't have to do as much work to their grid to be able to handle the two-way power flow if 50% of their people ended up with solar power. Other places might have to do an extreme amount of work to be able to handle that. And then their ratepayers have to be able to know that, or be aware of the fact that they're going to have to pay a higher fee to be able to do that, to be able to rebuild their infrastructure or increase their infrastructure to be able to handle that system.
We look no further than the tree trimming. Our guys are local. They know where the branches are. They cut them. We had catastrophic storms come through here 10 years ago that happened to be the two years preceding that Exelon decided that those were the two years they were going to cut their budget on that. And the implications, I believe, were dramatic on the amount of work that needed to be done because all the lines were down. They were calling people in from the whole, whole country to repair. And Batavia, I guess, what we got done first, and we're helping everybody else. That's the kind of thing, that local being nimble, that I would rather have that kind of control because we, we knew the plan for things like that because it was pragmatic. It was practical.
But in this bill, changes that?
Not that exactly. But that, that kind Not that exactly, but that, that kind of attention to work, I feel like we, we know what, we know our grid, we know our systems. I feel more ownership from it, that's all. This doesn't change that, you're right, it doesn't. It changes my perception of how we do what we do. That's all.
And I agree, though, I think we need to plan for things in the future, and we need to think about, are we, you know, are our rates at the right point to be able to handle the infrastructure changes we're going to have, to handle a plant shutdown, to handle the costs we're going to have for things into the future as we change over from, you know, the power supply that we have now to basically an open market? How are we going to handle that? How is our staff going to handle that? I mean, there's a lot of questions that are still out there, and I think we all have to be willing to realize that that's going to be stuff we're going to have to answer. I just feel like, for me, you know, and the other stuff that we opposed before, was being forced to be told when we had to do that, how we had to do that, you know, and, and the same thing goes through with net billing and net metering. Who knows exactly what we have to have to be able to tell somebody what it costs for us to accept the power from them? You want the state to tell us that? You want the state to take control of that? Or do you want to leave the control here? And that's one of the big issues that I had with things that we opposed in earlier bills. Mark?
Yeah, Tony, to go back to your point, I would definitely say, I mean, if we want to start having a conversation, what it costs for us to start doing a power plan? Absolutely, I have no problem doing that, throw it in the budget. I mean, cost is going to be a factor. I mean, would we save some costs if we did it through NIPA? Probably. If we had, if a bunch of us got together and said we want to analyze this, but why not start it? I mean, I, I'm pretty sure you'd get eight votes. So I'm not, I wouldn't, I doubt that that would be an issue. And when we get to other, ask for it to be put on a discussion to say, hey, let's start investigating what it is, and I join you on that. I, I agree that I think we, I don't want to go pay for our plan and then to hand it over to this group, and then this group says, eh, yeah, but we don't like this, so now we're going to charge you to redo the plan or something like that, now we've got to pay more money. So now we're, now we're getting, we're paying twice. Or you're turning it over to a group of people that are appointed, and they're appointed, and then go look at the corruption that's happened in Illinois with appointed positions over the years, and where does the business go? The business goes to those people that were appointed in the interests that they have. That is the mess that I see in this, is these appointed positions. They're not elected people. The, you have, we have these seats on this side of the table because of the people that made the decision of where we're at right now, because these seats opened up, because those people were held accountable for what they did. Those appointed people down in, in Springfield are not going to be held accountable, and doesn't matter how many people call up and complain about them, doesn't matter, they're friends.
I'll make the reference, right now, there's somebody that's on one of the groups that's writing this legislation or helping to write this legislation that directly benefits by working for a company that sells solar. So that's a reality. And just like it happened when we tried to start a utility to have our own broadband, AT&amp;T went in and wrote the legislation for five states at one time and got it passed within two years. They literally threw millions of dollars at it, they wrote the legislation, so they benefited from it and basically shut down municipal broadband. That's what happens, and that's what happens in Illinois, and it's happening right now.
It wasn't just AT&amp;T, there's SBC too, and all the other, a lot of companies benefiting from it.
Yeah, I, I hear you, what everyone's saying here, you know, maybe this is opportunity, maybe this has pushed us to, to move in that direction. I appreciate that, Laura, it is in the strategic plan, but I think we need to be serious about it, and now it looks like these two pieces of legislation are kind of on hold. This is an opportunity that we could come back to, if, if it does resurface next year when it's not an election year, let's be real, that's playing, surely playing into the calculus, but having, you know, having a, a plan that's, that's fluid, that can be changed as technology does. But one other piece that's in here is that transparency piece, the, which I pointed out the last time, the change in the Open Meetings Act, which doesn't allow stuff to be hidden, you know, if we're going to come up with a plan, it just can't be us and staff sitting around the table. We need the community, we need the, the ratepayers to be involved, and they need to be informed. They need to be informed of what's happening.
And that wouldn't be an issue with this. We're just down by Prairie State that we're.
No, there's, there's things that, from, from Prairie State that they're not privy to. An example, you'll recall that we got information, there was a study done about carbon capture being done, and what we heard back was, Gary, you reported this to us, that it was way too expensive, it was five billion dollars. Lo and behold, a little while later, here we, there's, there's whole new talk about carbon capture, and we don't know anything about this. And there's some serious concerns about the environment with, with what's being talked about in, in terms of carbon capture, piping it through, you know, across our country and, and, you know, burying it and, you know, for the sole purpose of keeping open a polluting plant. That's, you know, those are the kind of things that make me very concerned when the public doesn't know that stuff, and this specifically addresses that in the legislation, to change that Open Meetings Act so they can't hide behind that just because it's a, under, under a contract. So it changes the, those stipulations.
Can you be more specific about what information was not shared publicly? Because actually, the project that is being funded by Department of Energy and through University of Illinois is a public project, and there's a lot of documentation available online about that project. And it was, at one point, it was, there was a, a decision that needed to be made about whether the project was going to be continued or be defunded, and I think they had their funding renewed to take the research to the next step. Am I right about that?
So who's investing in that, though?
Private companies.
Department of Energy.
Yeah, and so we don't know that stuff.
But that's, the Prairie State said that they weren't, they didn't want to spend the money on it to build that. They would allow a private company to do it, and that private company would make the revenues, they would make, they would take the losses, whatever it would be, but Prairie State said, no, we're not going to personally invest in this, and we had put our objection up. That's where that's at right now. That's not anything hidden from the public, that's, that's.
I, I stated that in front of city council, and there's never been a value stated of five billion dollars. I don't know where that value ever came from, if you've heard that.
The billions is what they, that's coming.
But the, but the FEED study, the FEED study was done through the University of Illinois and the Department of Energy. That FEED study is complete now and is published on the Department of Energy's website. The FEED study, go ahead, Alderman.
So if there's information that, that's not being kept from the public, why is there non-disclosure agreements that have to be signed?
Well, you're conflating, you're conflating several different issues together, so let me finish addressing the first issues that you've put out there. The FEED study is finished now, it's on the Department of Energy's website. As Alderman, you were just alluded to, from the very beginning, in fact, prior to the completion of the FEED study, Prairie State has publicly stated that it has no intention to go forward with a carbon capture facility that it's going to pay for. Prairie State has been pursuing, we continue to pursue, having a private developer come in and pay for that using forty-five Q tax credits, which the federal government has set up, because the federal government is, is supporting carbon capture. The new Clean Air Act, which has maybe come to publication or maybe got out of the office, OMB, OMB's office, I don't remember what that acronym stands for anymore off the top of my head as I'm trying to rattle this off, federal statute is actually calling for carbon capture. So the feds are saying you have to have carbon capture, the state is saying we don't want carbon capture. This is why, as owners of Prairie State, we're saying, we're not getting in the middle of this, if a developer wants to come in and pay for this and do this, let the developer come in and do this. We've never said we're going to go forward and pay funds, and in fact, I know I stood up before the city council and said that. So the other issue that you've raised is an issue I've, I will cover also in executive session tonight, and I said in my, my public memos, the city has a contract with NIPA, NIPA has a contract with Prairie State, and the language that was in the legislative bill very well could likely set up a legal challenge that would have to be executed between either Batavia and the state of Illinois, NIPA and the state of Illinois, the owners in the state of Illinois. There, this language would take away contractual rights that we have today, and, you know, I'm not an attorney, but, but legislation that takes away contractual rights generally leads to litigation.
A couple comments. On Zoom tonight is Michelle Knox, who is one of the authors of the Solar Bill of Rights. She does work, I believe, for a solar firm. I would, so we can direct questions, that sounds like that one is the one that's still alive, so that might be a good one to ask some direct questions of, and I would caution us to kind of disparage those that are for-profit entities in this world and in this legislation, given that the fossil fuel industry has gotten to write legislation for hundreds of years now and are subsidized to the tune of billions, if not trillions, in this country. So to disparage those trying to push us into a place that we have to go, we're being forced by the state because we're not moving fast enough. We have to change everything, Dan, like, everything is going to change in our entire electrical system. As Gary said, it's going to cost trillions of dollars. This country is also spending estimated of a hundred and fifty billion dollars a year just to clean up from major cleanup, from major climate events that happen every single year. The longer we take, the more expensive it's going to be, and the more unhealthy our planet, our state, our town is going to be. It's going to be hard, it's going to be expensive, and it's going to cost more for those of us that have made bad decisions in the past. We kind of have to own that. We are, we are a neighbor, we should be a good global citizen, we should not be disparaging those trying to make it livable for our kids in the future. And I have random notes that, just from the comments that were made before, I want to say, and I can't speak to it as much because I don't follow Naperville policy as much, some of the transparency things were results of plans made by IMEA without any consultation of the municipalities that were a part of that, or their city councils, or their environmental I have other things, I just wanted to make sure that we knew that Michelle was on the line, if that's the bill that is looking like it's going to have energy and be pushed through to more conversations, we can ask her some direct questions and find out exactly if it's going to mean we can't cut down our trees or whatever that was about.
The, the non-disclosure agreement that I signed, I recall, didn't make it to the person who was supposed to sign it, and I had to re-execute a few years later, and so I couldn't see a rate study, and so I resigned. Do you recall that, probably about five years ago?
Well, there was, there was actually a handful of aldermen who weren't fully executed in their agreements, yes.
The person who was driving the car, and I guess had passed away or something, not a good situation, but I couldn't see.
That was a tragic situation, actually, yeah.
I couldn't see a rate study because the person never executed the thing.
Yep.
Had to re-execute the thing, and that's literally the only document I have not seen in fourteen years, and I got to see it a week later. And that was right here, and I can understand why you wouldn't want to release that thing to the general public, is it a five-hundred-thousand-dollar study on what price to charge for french fries? You know? That's, that makes sense to me, but never once have I felt like I couldn't, I couldn't get information. And I hope I made Susan laugh when I, I said I wanted to get some information, because I know I made her laugh because I called her. She said she gets all her information electronically, and said that NIPA has been nothing but transparent.
I guess, Abby, I have no problem saying that I don't like the fact that somebody is profiting off of legislation they're writing, and I'll say it, I've said it for decades about how insane I think it is that the state of Illinois is still subsidizing Archer Daniels Midland to waste water, to grow corn, for a forced mandate so that they can put alcohol in our gasoline. There's no problem picking on one today versus one that's been getting money for fifty years. If it's wrong, it's wrong, and I don't care if it's a decade ago, last month, or today, if it's wrong, I'm going to say it's wrong.
Can we confirm from Michelle that is anybody profiting off of the legislation that's helping write the legislation?
No, and in fact, what I'm doing is spending a lot of time advocating, trying to educate. I was a teacher prior to starting this business, it's part of the reason I got into the business, and I'm spending a lot of my time, rather than concentrating on my business activities, on trying to educate and advocate for HB fifty-three fifteen. I wrote it after having spent, I started in two thousand seventeen, understanding rural electric cooperative and municipal utility structures, and trying to work cooperatively within those areas. And so from that work and that experience, I was able to identify issues that I felt were, needed to be addressed, and initially I wrote a document called Eleven Hot Topics that addressed each of these issues. I did set and work cooperatively with the IMEA, Stacy Wilson, and also with Nick Wrights at the Association of Illinois Electric Cooperatives, after siege had passed and the right to self-generate language was included, to try to address those hot topics and see if we could come to some, you know, collaborative effort where we were able, able to address them in a good way. We did make a little bit of progress on some of them, but there were still issues that were left unresolved, and there was no more, no, no more communication happening, and namely, that even though the right to self-generate did grant municipal and rural electric cooperative customers some rights that they didn't have previously, there was no opportunity for recourse if they did have a complaint process. You know, it's that you could go to your utility, your local elected officials, your administration, but if they just said, no, too bad, that was it, and then the recourse after that was to try to file a lawsuit, and many people don't have the funds to be able to do that. So the part that's in there about the consumer complaint process through the Illinois Commerce Commission, it's a process that's already in place, it was just written in to give an outlet for a community member or a rural cooperative electric customer that had tried to navigate through the normal channels to no avail and had nowhere to go other than, and had nowhere to go. And this allows them a process to go, it's not, it's not meant to have a bunch of attorneys or cost anybody a bunch of cost, it's, it's meant for people to have an outlet to file a complaint for an outside third party to say to the other party, please address this, to get the responses, to have, to have a process in place where there is none now. So many of these things, I think they're being misconstrued, and I think the intent behind the bill is being misconstrued. It's not meant to take away local control. I, I myself am an elected official, I'm on the Village of Owannaco, prior to joining this meeting tonight, I was just at a meeting there. So I understand the process, I understand in bigger communities what you guys are tasked with, all of the different issues that come before you, I've been listening to it tonight. And so, you know, back to the IRP, which I've heard a lot about, which is in fifty-twenty-one, isn't, isn't fifty-three fifteen, but that's basically just a strategic plan. I heard the gentleman from the fire department talking about, you know, a, a study proposal, a strategic plan, a path forward, a way to be able to make good decisions, that's the intent behind that. And so I think a lot of this, understanding intent and knowing that it isn't to take away local control, is to just make sure that people are being heard, that they have a process to make sure that policies are fair. From a standpoint, from a consumer protection standpoint, I can tell you that it's difficult to model with reasonable assurance when you have, you know, all the different cooperatives and all the different municipal utilities with different policies, different rates, and even if you're a very meticulous developer, I started this business in two thousand eight, and so I try really hard to make sure that I understand policies and you're modeling correctly, but when it's, when everything's always ever-changing, it's hard to do that, that opens it up for people to get taken advantage of, even without intent behind it. And so nothing in what is being done here or in all of this effort that I've done is benefiting me financially. That's not what I'm here to do. I'm here to try to make a difference in the state and to make sure that we, as a state, are aligned, that there are processes for stakeholders to be involved and represented, and that we are moving towards a clean energy economy, which is what, what our elected officials have done, where we've got a goal of forty percent renewables by two thousand thirty, that is applicable to the investor-owned utilities, but I think we have to all start planning and working together. utilities. But I think we have to all start planning and working together. And that's what my hope is. And the bills, as they are introduced, do need some amendments. There are going to be some amendments and discussions. And so I guess what I would say to the committee is if everyone can keep an open mind, and to do what was suggested earlier, where you write down the things that you have issue with, why you have issue with them, and then you also write down the things that you like and why you like them, that helps this process to move along, and for everyone to be considered, and for us to end up with a result that feel, everyone feels respected, and that we're all on the same page, working for the common good.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify. So you're an elected official?
No, no, sir. My name's Michelle Knox. I live in Owanaco, Illinois. It's a little village in central Illinois. I primarily, I own Wind Solar USA, which is a renewable energy development company that I started back in 2008. And I did training for three and a half years before I went full-time, so that I would be educated and felt like I knew what I was talking about when I went out there to the public. I'm an instructor of solar at Lincoln Land Community College. I'm a member of the Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition. I'm a member of the Illinois Solar Energy Association. And as I mentioned prior to starting my business, I was a Montessori teacher for 10 years. I taught six-to-nine-year-olds in Springfield.
Do you have to carry like a lobbyist registration to do what you do, or no?
I'm not a lobbyist. I don't get paid anything for anything I do.
Just to ask you if you had to register with one?
No, sir. I consider myself an educator. That's what my purpose is, and that's why I'm joining you this evening, so that if anyone had questions, or wanted clarification on any aspects of the bill that felt uncomfortable, that I could try to explain it, and the intent behind it, to hopefully create a greater understanding.
Your input is appreciated, because as an elected official, I represent my neighbors, but I also represent the city. And sometimes their interests, while nuanced, are in opposition to each other. And sometimes I have to educate my neighbors on something that I have all the memos on. And they don't. And they insist that I'm wrong. And I believe that they're wrong, but I can't convince them that they're wrong, because I have access to all the information. And now I have to vote on something with my heart that says, I need to do the right thing, or I need to do what you're telling me to do. And the truth is, is both of us are standing in front of a number. And the number I'm standing in front of is a six. And you will fight me to the death that it's a nine, and we're both right. And that I run into all the time.
And I'm not here to fight, sir. I'm just here if you have questions, you know?
I'm happy on the line. I wish I'd known you were on the line.
Oh, thank you.
I would have more questions for you. This is the best question I could ask you is, how do you resolve my problem? I see a six, you see a nine. How do I bridge that? Because that actually would have helped me as a new elected official.
Well, I think through open communication, I think through understanding, like the process that was actually laid out by one of the board members. I'm sorry, you guys look small to me, so I can't identify who's who. But I think what somebody mentioned earlier about, you know, as I mentioned also, laying out the parts that are concerning, the parts that aren't concerning, and then all of us working together to come up with, okay, we all think that a strategic plan makes good sense, right? And the I R P process is not meant to take away your control. It's meant to start planning, so we don't all get caught with our pants down at some point in time, excuse the phrase. But, you know, where we're trying to move towards this clean energy economy, we don't want to get to the point that the infrastructure can't handle it, and then we are experiencing problems. We need to start thinking about it now. And by looking at it individually, by community, you're looking at your individual resources. I was part of, in Springfield, they did an I R P back in 2018, I believe it was. And so I did get to hear, and it was done by the Energy Authority, called T, which was an outside third party that did this resource plan, and then came in and did a presentation to city council, and to staff, and to the general public. I mean, it was just an open presentation of their findings. It was very informational. And as all of you probably know, what they deemed appropriate at that time was that it was in Springfield's best interest to shut down Dolman 1, 2, and 3. To that Dolman 4 was, depending on the price of coal, made sense, but might not make sense. And it shows the varying things. It was just an intense amount of information presented to council, and to the utility, and to the public, that allowed everybody to then be able to work together on what made sense for deliverables to be asked of the utility, for the utility to come back with those. It is a little bit of a different model in that they do produce their own electricity. You know, they are in the I M U A versus the I M E A. But still, I think the process and just what happened and how it was done was good. And in the end, it was really up to city council, and up to C W L P, and the citizens of Springfield, what they did with the information. It was just having that information from which good decisions could be made. And then, looking forward, the reason that timeframe is suggested is that, looking at, okay, this happened in 2018, what's happened since then? Where are we at now? What does energy look like now? New technologies, you guys mentioned about new technologies emerging, of course. And so having that outside third party that has that area of expertise to advise, brings things to the table for consideration that might have otherwise went unknown.
Is there anything in the bill that you would change based on what you've heard tonight?
I mean, I think there's a couple areas in H B 5315 that we want to talk about. I want to clarify that net metering, as it lists in there, does not state what the rate is. And I also want to clarify that, right now, in the investor-owned utility territories, there is retail net metering with an annual reconciliation. But as of January 1 of 2025, that is going to change. And there's going to be a study done by the Illinois Commerce Commission that's going to determine the value of solar. And then whatever that value is determined to be, will likely be implemented as the feedback rate. People will still be offsetting behind the meter at retail, but what is fed back may go to something less in retail. There may also be an additional inverter rebate. So, you know, in talking with, because I've talked with the Association of Illinois Electric Cooperatives, and with the I M E A, we've had conference calls, and in talking with them, and hearing, well, that's going to change in the near future, and so we don't want to be obligated to do something that's going to change. I think that's a reasonable thing to hear. So these are the type of things. But, 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 I want to throw in the other side of it. If I'm a cooperative customer, and let me give you just a couple examples. If I'm a cooperative customer, right now in many territories, what the feedback rate is, it's 3.2 cents. It's the same price that they're paying for electricity that they're getting from Prairie State. And they're not taking into consideration any of the value of local distributed generation, and that neighbors feeding neighbors, and things of that nature. So is it fair that, you know, I've got a system and I'm overproduced, again, it goes back on the line, my next neighbor, my neighbor next door pulls it down and uses it, or a mile down, in the case of a cooperative, uses it, and they're paying, you know, 12 or 13 cents, but I got paid 3.2 for that to go one mile. Is that fair? Is that a fair value? Is that the fair credit, solar fair credit that's referenced in C J A? So it's those type of things that need to be figured out and defined. And again, nothing in any of these bills is meant to take away local control. And I want to make that really clear, because that was a big consideration in what we were talking about. It's just, really, the intent behind is making sure that there are fair processes, that stakeholders are involved, that communities are not getting left behind in terms of the planning. And then, boom, here it is, they've got to do something, and they're not prepared. And as someone mentioned earlier, then there's a tremendous infrastructure cost that need to be done, and where's the money coming from? So all of this helps to make sure that that doesn't happen, and that we're trying to get on the same page with that. And I think that it's just important to know that this is not cut and dried. We're proposing legislation. We want everyone to come to the table. We want to have an open process. We want to do what makes sense. And we want to have communities involved. We want to have co-ops involved. We just want to make sure that we're all getting a fair, an opportunity to be heard, and that information from all parties is being considered by decision makers.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Ms. Knox, under House Bill 5315, isn't it true that it's proposed under that legislation to have one generic policy for all municipals and co-ops throughout the entire state, so that a town like Mascota would have the same policy as a town like Batavia, or Naperville? Or, I mean, and I guess I'll ask the question, how does that not take away local control if everyone in the state has to abide by a policy that may not fit their individual needs? Because every one of those towns may have individual and unique needs and reasons why they have the policies that they do today.
Well, I guess I would need to understand better what those individual needs would be, because the reason for the shared policy, that's what it's deemed in the legislation, and the reason for the shared policy goes back to the consumer protection that I mentioned to you previously. So let's say, let me just give you guys a snapshot. So there's different types of reconciliation that can happen. In the investor-owned utility territories, BUCKS connect meter all year long, retail, one-to-one, back and forth. And it's reconciled once a year, either in October or April. And what I mean by reconciled is, they're banking kilowatt hours, kind of like we used to bank cellphone minutes, those of us that are old enough to remember that. So you bank the cellphone minute, you know, and then you pull from it at night, or in times of less production. And then on that reconciliation date, if there's anything left in the bank, it zeros out. So that's called retail net metering with an annual reconciliation. Next up is going to be retail net metering with a quarterly reconciliation. Some cooperatives had that. So what they would do is they would let people net meter, but at the end of each quarter, if there was anything left in the bank, most would pay out at avoided cost, what their cost to procure power was. Some, one particular cooperative, just zeroed that out. So if there was anything left at the end of a quarter, they would zero it out. So in that particular case, there's a customer that I can cite that had overproduced 1,240 kilowatt hours in the spring. It was a new home. They'd just moved into this utility territory. And basically, they got that zeroed out. And their neighbor, so they got paid zero to produce it, but their neighbor that lives, you know, one mile down from them, paid 12.4 cents for that power that they paid to produce. That's not right. Monthly reconciliation is the next up. And what that does is the same thing, except it's done on a monthly basis. So you can feed back and forth throughout the month, but at the end of the month, it's reconciled, and generally it's carried forward at an avoided cost, as a credit onto the next month's bill. Okay? So that's co-op side. Now, on the muni side, the I M E A came up with the Fair Solar Credit. So, you know, if I'm modeling someone that lives in Chatham, it might be seven cents. But if I'm modeling someone that lives in Highland, it might be five cents for the feedback rate. If I'm modeling someone that lives in Springfield, it's full retail. You know, so from a standpoint of having all these different policies across the board, all different rates, then how can, and then, wait a minute, that rate gets changed every year. So how can someone model a system responsibly for a consumer, to show them the financial performance, so they can make a good decision if it's good for them or not, if there isn't some type of baseline or standardization that allows there to be that to work from? I've seen it happen. I've seen people get taken, and it isn't taken advantage of because of someone's trying to do it intentionally. It's just that someone came into the state, maybe wasn't experienced, you know, saw solar as an opportunity, and didn't understand that we have all of this policy stuff going on all over the place in the muni and co-op territories, and, you know, inadvertently did the work. So that's the intent behind that. It's not to take away local control. It's to create some type of standard that ensures that consumers are going to get fair treatment, number one, and number two, that they're not going to be, you know, incorrectly modeled by just not understanding that there's so much going on, and so many different policies.
But I might have to jump in one last time.
Can I just say one thing, Gary? I think I'll just be more direct than you. You've mentioned intent several, several times. And everybody can have good intentions, but everything that you just described, which was very articulate and eloquent, bottom line, the effect of it is it takes away the power from the city of Batavia. So intentions are all good. Everybody has good intentions, or you would hope so. The effect, you just described what the effect is, and the effect is taking away power from the local municipality.
I'll expand on that. I mean, it seemed to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed to me your goal is to get a uniform policy across co-ops and municipals, so that it is easier for solar vendors to do a financial model for consumers, so that they, the consumers are then represented properly, or in a better manner. And I understand that's a good goal, but it also means the other side of the equation is that every municipality, from Mascota to Naperville, has to now change all of our ways of doing things in order to conform to a generic policy across the entire state, so that it's easier for vendors to calculate. I mean, maybe I'm mischaracterizing that, but that's what it sounded like.
You are mischaracterizing it. It wasn't so that it's easier for vendors to calculate. It's so that consumers don't inadvertently get mismodeled, and purchase something based on what they believe to be true. That really wasn't. And if you can imagine-
The belief that consumers would have is coming from vendors, right? And the consumers aren't coming to us to financially model their solar system.
Sir, I just want to, I want to dispel the myth that this is about. I want to repeat again that my involvement in any of this, and the bill, the bill as it's written, is not about making money. The bill is about protecting consumers. The bill is about making sure that we're moving forward as a state with renewable energy goals. It's making sure that communities are planning, and are prepared for the future, and that they don't get caught in bad situations. And we can spin it however we want to spin it, but that is the intent behind it. And I'm here tonight, working at what time, eight, nine o'clock at night, in a community that I've never even traveled to, to try to offer education and assistance. And I'm not gaining anything financially from this. I don't intend to. I'm here to try to help, and to try to educate, and to try to move things forward in a positive way for all of us. So, and I'm not offended. I understand, I understand what people think about the business thing, but case in point, here I am, and there's no financial gain here for me.
Sarah, I know you've been waiting. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to say, as someone who has been a solar customer, I can see the merits of this really streamlining things, because it is a wealth of information that you're trying to assess. So I can see where that's coming from. After listening to what Michelle said, I think I understand the intent of the bill. This is all so new. There is so much coming at us as the city, as a state, as a country with the climate situation. C J A was passed. So I understand it now, is that these bills are to help us get a path forward, and to kind of create direction for us more than anything. Is that where this one? Okay. I lost my train of thought. I had like five things that I was going to say. Tony, when you said, "We don't have a plan," Laurie mentioned, "we do. We do have a plan." But I think that this is kind of lighting a fire underneath everybody to kind of act on whatever plans we have. And I'm sure not every city has done what we've done and made a plan yet. So I think that that is statewide, we're trying to, or what the intent is, is to get us to make plans, to move forward, and be more energy-friendly. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's just, you know, for those, there's all varying levels of planning and different things that are being done. And I think Batavia has done a good job. You know, some of the, some other communities may not have. And what we're trying to do is just to create consistency, and make sure that everybody's done one. And if you've already done some of the things in the bill, good. There's nothing more to do. But if you haven't, then it helps to kind of create a catalyst where people will start moving along, and thinking about it, and doing those things, so that no one is left behind. So that's the idea. And I think you did a good job of summarizing it, Sarah.
Thank you. And one more thing, I want someone like Michelle in the room when this- Thank you. And one more thing, I want someone like Michelle in the room when this is being written because she said she has been in several communities, she has worked in the industry, she has knowledge that I don't and that, you know, many of us don't. So, I want her writing the bill alongside other policymakers. I think that that helps inform everything. Like, when it comes to bills and education, I want teachers in the room when those are being written. I think those are all of my thoughts.
Thank you.
Michelle, didn't the state of California abandon net metering and, because they were ending up collecting so little in rates from customers that they weren't able to keep up with the maintenance of their electrical grid and make improvements because of the large amount of electrification of things that were happening? And why won't that happen here?
California is a much more mature solar state than Illinois, and that did happen when they reached about, and also, a similar thing happened in Hawaii. And it was when they reached a solar penetration of over 50%. And so, you know, in the state of Illinois, we're not there yet. And the other thing that hadn't happened in California that we've, you know, learned lessons from, they're kind of leaders in terms of what they've done. And then we all kind of stand back and look at it and take away best practices. And I think, someone I think mentioned earlier about storage, and storage is a big thing. And it's becoming more prominent. And in fact, that's what California is now moving to, is implementing storage and learning how to take that renewable resource and be able to have it as dispatchable power, which is an important component of renewables. No one, including me, no one is going to say that it's not a variable resource. It is, you know, and wind works well in the fall, winter, and spring. Solar works well in the spring, summer, and fall. And so, the two complement each other. But solar works during the day, as we know, when the sun shines unless there's an eclipse. And then, and when, more so probably in the evening times. But having that storage component allows us to take this variable resource that's being provided to us and to store it, and then to be able to use it as dispatchable power. So, that's another thing that could be included in those integrated resource plannings, in those integrated resource plans. And also, thinking about how to shave peak demand, things like that, by using storage, being able to, if you do have to pull power from the grid, pulling at a time when the cost is low in the market, storing and then dispatching in times of peak demand, that's another way to create efficiencies within cities, or, you know, where there's high-use patterns at particular times. Creating microgrids where you have storage so that if one part of the city goes down, your storage and that part at that substation maybe can stay operational. So, there's just a lot of exciting things that are coming about as opportunities that I think having an outside third party that's educated to come in and do this education is very critical to good planning. And that's really the whole purpose behind it, is having that information, knowing what the opportunities are, and having it from someone that doesn't have a special interest, just someone that's there as a consultant to be able to show you, these are ideas, these are plans, not saying that you have to do any of it. Nothing in the bill says you have to do any of it. It's about just planning, and then the local people making the local decisions based on what's best for their communities.
Your Honor, you had something to...
Yeah, I had the opportunity last Friday to attend a meeting down at the Moraine Valley Community College, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We had 76 mayors from the region in the room. I will tell you, as you know, I've been the mayor here a long time. I've never left any session so dismayed as I did that one when I got through hearing all the conversations that were being held. And the big one is, is that the current session of the Illinois General Assembly is a trick in the bag. There's all kinds of trick legislation laying around down there. They want to do everything from collapse the RTA to get rid of crime-free housing, to start requiring all this advancement in community supplies, i.e. water, electric, and sewer. And they've got an interesting bill down there for the water folks. They're trying to get most of it moved out of Lake, pumped out of Lake Michigan. But once you take the water out of Lake Michigan, you get it out 30 miles west of or south of Chicago, the cost of the 90-plus million-dollar pipe that they're going to have to put in the ground to get it there is going to be something that's going to be laying on your customers' water bills for several generations, and we're going to see water rates like we've never seen before. And the electric, of course, I'm kind of unique because I'm one of the few mayors sitting there that has this electric thing going, but all the rest of them are wondering what's really happening here. You know, there's a lot of push about solar and windmill power and whatever have you. I'd shared with them the experience. I had a gentleman here call me about a year ago and wanted to put solar panels on his roof. And the first company he called told him they'd do it for $19,000. The next company that he called, they told him they would do it for $28,000. And the last company he called, they said they'd do it for $36,000. So, he called up me as the mayor and wanted to know, "What company would I recommend here?" And I said, "Well, it's a little bit like buying a car." I don't know that much about all these companies, but he says, "Well, it certainly looks like there's some people in this game that are trying to make some money." And so, I mean, there's all this stuff floating around here. I'm glad we've got, you know, some people down here nosing around and trying to give us some direction as to where we're going with this whole thing because this is becoming a very complex and very political situation in the state of Illinois. At the end of the meeting, we were told that everything's going to kind of just lay in kind of a non-moving state for about the end of this year. The 2024 isn't going to be too good, but 2025 is when municipal governments really get thrown into the dark, no pun intended, but because that's the year when all these new ideas for spending money and new additional costs and everything else are going to be laid upon our thresholds and told us that that's what's going to go on. So, I'm glad we have all of you here serving the community because we're going to need some good minds, and I think we have them here in the city council, to deal with this variety of situations that are going on, including this whole thing about the power.
I think the best thing to come out of this is that we're talking about it all the time and that we're being more and more educated about it because I think, going back to the decisions that were previously made, we thought we had all the information. We thought we had all the knowledge we needed, and we didn't. And I think it's really important that we try to stay as up-to-date on it, as in front of it as we can, and do the planning that we need to, and do the things that are right for our city. And, you know, if legislation that's in Springfield affects us, we have to be involved with it before it happens so that way, we can do what we feel is best for our city. And if that means that there's one piece that we really agree with and we want to make sure that happens, then we do everything we can to make that happen. And if there's two things we don't like, we make sure that we stay involved and we try to stop those from happening. And I think that's really important that that's the kind of mindset we have. We have a lot of people that are really involved in this, that spend a ton of time in it, and I think it's something that we have to make sure that we don't drop the ball on. We have to keep moving on it. And, you know, I said it at the beginning, I think that was what came out of the last meeting we had, was we have to pick the things we don't like, make sure we stand up against them. And the things that we do like and the things we want to advance, we have to stand up and shout those and make sure that we get them done. You know, and that's the reality is I think we have to think that way, and we have to be able to do both of them. And I know Susan wants to talk. She didn't sit here all night just to listen to us. So, Tony?
Just one quick question. Thank you, Ms. Knox. Very informative. I appreciate the example you gave of someone that has a solar system and they're producing energy that's, and they only get paid a small amount for it, whereas someone else, you know, benefits from that. In Batavia, we kind of have the inverse of that, so to say. We're on the hook to buy so much power from Prairie State, and we're not using it all. So, when we have to sell it back at a lower rate, we're taking a loss. If we have people that are getting paid for their solar, more so, it's going to cause the rate to go up for the rest of the ratepayers. And that's not fair. So, it's, there's a conundrum there. What's, you know, is that taken into consideration?
Yeah, I mean, I hear the conundrum, and I think that it, what comes to me first is that it is kind of an example of why this IRP planning process is done because there's an overprocurement. You guys are stuck. And the one thing that I've learned in understanding municipal and rural electric cooperatives is that these power contracts and these agreements that we're entered into, good, bad, or otherwise, you know, are the binding agents that are keeping a lot of communities and cooperatives in the situation that they're in. And it's an unfortunate situation that Batavia is in, that you're overprocured and, you know, have more power, have to purchase more power than what is needed. And I'm not sure why all that came about. I mean, that's past history. But in terms of the solar, is that, does that decision in the past change the way that you guys should be looking at it for the future in terms of what you're offering to citizens in terms of variability for energy choices, in terms of what you're thinking about for your policy? I think there's a way to think about that and to make it happen and to ask that, you know, is there a way to, are you limited? I don't know the answer to the overprocurement. I don't know the answer to that. I think that that's probably something that needs to be tackled, but I don't know what that looks like for you guys. But if that were tackled, then I think some of this other stuff, you wouldn't feel so much strain about. So, I guess if there were something that I would suggest looking at, it would be that, if there's any opportunity to allow you guys more freedom to be able to look at your own resources, you know, municipally, and/or resources within your community by your residents and business owners that are doing distributed generation.
Thank you. In other words, come up with a solution that is uniquely Batavia.
On the hard part, yes.
This just reinforces with me that we have to be able to make the decisions for our community. You know, whatever our costs are to maintain the system, to provide, you know, the 24/7 power that's required by our contracts to our residents, no matter whether they're generating back into the system or not, that cost has to be deducted from whatever they generate. And to be forced by the state to a generic point of, "You're going to pay back this much," whether it's a percentage or an actual rate, to me, doesn't take into account that we're running a different utility than St. Charles or Geneva or Naperville. You know, that's something that we have to make that decision on and not be forced because if we're forced or another city's forced to do that, then it may make poor financial sense that all of the rest of their ratepayers have to take over because of that. And, you know, and that's a bad enough situation for us to be in now with having too much power that we don't use, that all of our ratepayers have to take the burden for. But if we were forced to do that again, as solar or, you know, renewable becomes more prevalent, then that's just another thing that gets spread out over everybody, and our ratepayers all have to pay that.
And nowhere in the legislation, I just want to, again, clarify that nowhere in the legislation does it explicitly state what that feedback rate is. And I hear what you're saying. I think that, you know, three cents in one place, seven cents in another, 12 cents in another. We can see that there is an issue, and I think that we, it depends on what we want for our energy future. And I think that that's the thing behind it. And has there been, you know, another thing that, and this is not even something that, this is how convoluted it all can be. I have advocated for cost of services studies throughout all utility territories so that the utility understands exactly what is their cost of service, especially in rural electric cooperatives because they're, you know, the amount that they charge for the customer charge or facility charge is low, and then they take part of that rate and bury it in the cost per kilowatt hour, and that it's kind of, in essence, a subsidy, if you will. And so, in other words, they're not recouping the cost of what it even takes to operate the utility in that customer charge or facility charge. And the argument was always that, "Well, we don't want to do that because then our, you know, our low-income people wouldn't be able to afford it." And, but what's happening is the larger producers or consumers are actually subsidizing the lower. So, one way or another, it's that bad S-word that I don't like to use, subsidy. And so, the idea with the cost of services study is if you determined, and this was done in Spoon River Cooperative, they determined, they found out what their actual cost was to operate the utility. They had seven stakeholder meetings, they educated stakeholders, they increased that monthly amount they were going to charge just for having service before pulling a single kilowatt hour. They increased that to around $70. What they found, but they decreased the cost per kilowatt hour because they no longer had to bury part of that cost in the kilowatt-hour charge. And when they did that, what they did is they did rate, they did rate analysis for each customer in the utility and then shared that with them. And in almost all cases but two, the rate on the monthly bill actually went down. And what that allowed them to do is it took away the argument about solar because now they didn't care if you were solar or non-solar because their costs were being recouped by a level distribution of fixed cost across the whole customer base. And the overall, the overall outcome was that the consumer ended up paying about the same or a little bit less than they were paying before. And then, the solar, non-solar argument went away. So, I use that as yet another example of kind of some creative thinking in a very small little cooperative here in the state of Illinois, that where they actually did value the stakeholders and the ratepayers and did this process, and it was widely accepted. So, I think that with everything, I'll leave you guys, I don't want to continue to take up time, but I'll leave you guys with, I think that with all of it, if there's a way to communicate, a way to think about it, maybe even out of the box differently, to keep an open mind, there is a way to find a solution, and I hope that we can all work together towards that.
Thank you. Can you make sure to send, you know, either through administrator or through the, to all of us so we have information of how to contact you, especially if you're involved in writing the legislation?
Yeah, I was not a drafter. Just to be clear, Illinois Environmental Council drafted the bill. I just wrote the Solar Bill of Rights, and a lot of the ideas or concepts that came from that got incorporated in. So, yeah. But I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to be a resource, and I thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Susan, you want to come up and, I'm sure you want to say something?
Susan Russo, I'll try to be short. I want to just correct one thing. Mr. Chansett, you said that, I said that NIPA was nothing but transparent. That is not really true.
All right.
Okay. Because transparency is a free exchange of information back and forth. Okay? And NIPA has been very cooperative. Mr. Home has been extraordinarily engaged with conversations with me and with others who have concerns. But there is a lack of transparency in with regard to the sharing of information. As Gary said, he did tell you that a carbon capture system was not going to be built using owner's money, and that is correct. And he was absolutely honest with you on that. However, three months after the Inflation Reduction Act was passed and money became available through tax credits, Prairie State Generating Company issued solicitations of interest for that carbon capture system. So, here you have Prairie State Generating Company proceeding with the construction or the potential construction of a carbon capture system. And to my knowledge, they haven't come to, I don't know, I don't think they've come to even NIPA, or certainly not to you folks, and discussed the pros and cons of doing that. Who are these, you know, private investors? What is their, you know, financial footing? What happens if they go bankrupt halfway through the project? Is this going to be built on a piece of land sold to them, or is it going to be leased, you know, by Prairie State to them? What are the liabilities of doing that? What are the other negative? What are the, what are the other negative and positive aspects of doing it? They did not come to Batavia City Council or Geneva City Council or any one of the IMEA city councils and get input before they issued that solicitation of interest three months after tax credits were known to be given. You know, another one is, you know, for example, I've asked, I don't know if you know, but there are talk, there is talk with, you know, coal power plants, well, maybe they can be switched to natural gas or nuclear, the small nukleers or that sort of thing, you know, to kind of get through kind of a transition period until batteries and renewables become more accessible and reliable. So I asked, you know, what other power fuel sources is Prairie State considering? And Mr. Home, as President of NIPA, assured me that the nine owners knew about those options and were considering them, but that he couldn't share them with me. I don't know. This is a power plant that we all bought into. Shouldn't we, shouldn't you at least know? Maybe you don't want to, I hope you don't want to know, but you should know what other options is Prairie State considering. Coal is the dirtiest, most climate harmful fuel. There are alternatives out there. What are they looking at? I'm not saying to do it tomorrow or even three years from now, but what are they looking at long term? You know, so that's another one. Another one is liability. You know, for the cleanup and closing costs. Again, we're being told they know about this. They have a state-required, you know, closing account, but we don't know exactly what's going into it and what our responsibility, we don't, is for that. We don't know, we don't know whether there's going to be enough in there or if some down the, we're down the line, we're going to have to have new bonds issued to clean up Prairie State when it closes. What's the plan? And why can't we be part of that planning process and understand what is going to happen or what could possibly happen? That's what I mean by transparency. That's why I believe that those Open Meetings Act amendments need to be done. So I just wanted to make that, you know, clearer because it's a difficult subject. It's not my communication with you, it's not my communication with city staff, it's more of the communication beyond those two levels, at the NIPA level and at the Prairie State Management level and at the Prairie State Management Committee and company, generating company level. There's that confidentiality clause in there that really shuts down a black curtain on absolutely everything. And I don't think that that black curtain should cut you and, you know, even some of us, some of your constituents off. And just, I will just say one last thing on the Integrated Resource Plan issue. I'm happy to hear that you would be willing to consider doing that. It would be, I think, a very important step. You did include, as Ms. Newman said, a strategic plan to do an infrastructure, excuse me, infrastructure study, and that's very, very important. And I think it's a first step. But infrastructure studies alone are not going to be enough because we have, you know, 2045 coming up potentially for the closing of Prairie State. We need to get a plan and we need to get a plan that we look at regularly. And I think, for example, you did an excellent situate, you did an excellent job tonight with the fire department. You know, you're studying what kind of staff is going to be needed for five to 10 years with regard to staffing at the fire department. Why aren't you doing it with your energy source? You know, buying that coal is an event. Having an energy plan is a process. You need to have a process. You need a process that's independently developed and thought through with all biases and, you know, preconceived concepts, you know, that have been around for a long time. And I'm happy, I'm very happy to hear that you're willing to do that. And I truly will hope that you will, and I'll keep tabs on it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
While you're up there, just one thing. After you were here the last time, I thought a lot about what you said and the way, you know, you brought up the things. And one of the things to me that stood out was, the big question is still out there, what is the state and the federal EPA and the regulatory thing is going to be when we get to that plant closing? And I don't know, I know we can plan, I know we could put aside whatever we think is right and whatever, you know, study shows what we should do. But the reality is, is between now and that, that time period, between now and then, we're going to have to be ready to change.
And that's, and that's
And that's part of, I think, why I want to see us retain local control. Because we're different than other cities just because of the situation that we're in. And, you know, that's kind of been my hang-up, some of this. But the reality is, is we have to acknowledge that throughout this time period leading up to that, we have to start planning what we're going to do and how we're going to fund it and then be ready to, you know, all of a sudden the federal government says, here's your new regulation, just like they did with the wastewater treatment plant, you got to come up with another $75 million to upgrade it, and we have to figure out how to do that, and our ratepayers have to do that. We go through a rate study, we change the wastewater rates, 8% for six years or eight years, whatever we're doing it. And we have to be able to apply that same theory and that same process to that.
Right.
So, you know, I totally agree with, that's how we have to do that. I'm just afraid that history with the state enforcing us to do things and adding costs to everything and taking away control of what we can do is not the right thing for the city. And that's why I so passionately go after the state and the regulations that they want to throw on us and not tell us how we're going to pay for it.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't want you to give up your local control either. I mean, by and large, okay? I would, I would flip that a little bit and say, this, you have to keep in mind, this whole issue all relates to climate change, and we're all in this together, and we all need to start making steps forward. Some are going to do it more quickly than others, but we all need to be on the page. And so what I see in Bill 5021 with the IRP process is not so much dictating to you how to do it as much as get the data that you need to make your local decisions. Because, but it's, I know it's forcing you to do something that you hadn't planned to do on your own or may not have. But what I see this is, is the state not telling, Batavy, you have to do it, you know, you slap on the hands, you didn't do it yet. They're not doing that so much as they're saying, okay, we've got this big problem with climate change. Now, in order to make sure that we all get to reasonably the same place of zero carbon emissions, all of you in the state of Illinois need to start doing this planning process. That's already in place for the vast majority of the state with Ameren and Comet. But for the million residents or so who have cooperative and municipal utilities, that's not true. We might be further ahead than Princeton. But then, and you know, and so you're going to have this real mismatch. So what I see this IRP process is doing is saying, okay, everybody needs to start making a plan. Obviously, there's going to be communities who are going to get to renewables much faster than Batavia is going to get to by virtue of the contract we have. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't all be planning and getting to that same place eventually. And the, the way I read 5021, the Illinois Power Agency isn't there to say, you did it wrong, go back and do it again, or change this. No, that isn't in the, in the bill. What they're doing is, the Illinois Power Agency is collecting these, they are imposing a stakeholder and a public comment period on those plans. Then those comments come back to city council and they can then change the plan in relation to those comments. But if, if the city council doesn't want to change the plan, there's nothing making them change it. And then that gets posted for 10 years and made available. Mark?
So Susan, I did want to address a few things. We, we can ask any question we want, and we have all signed NDAs. We will get the answer, and in most cases, we cannot give the answer to you. So let me, let me finish, please, just because a few things I want to address. So we can get that information. I will tell you, I have not bothered to worry about that, nor what's going to happen when we close, what's our plan going, going forward in the future. Because up until CJ was passed, our future was going to be coal forever. We are in a contract that as long as that plant is open, we're going to buy all of our electricity from there. So I personally never looked at it, never bothered. I just, when I started on council and we tried to get our way out of that and it failed, I'm like, that stinks. So I put no more effort into it. And then just recently, CJ has now kind of, you know, forced the hand. So we haven't done anything until now. So people are saying, hey, we need to do something. Yeah, let's do something, let's start planning. It's still a very long way off. So I don't want to go say, hey, let's go invest to build a solar farm that in 20 years. That's my point, though, is that this is still, unfortunately, it's still a long way off. Fortunately and unfortunately, because the amount of money that we still have to pay isn't going to stop when the plant closes, we owe that money. We can't get away from paying the money that we have to pay.
But Mark, your bonds will be paid by the time it closes.
My, my point is it's not going to happen sooner, and that's why I've never bothered doing anything in my own, because it hasn't, it wasn't a choice that I had until the last 18 months. That's my point. And that's probably, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody else, but it was like, I'm not going to waste the energy, no pun intended, on this right now because there's nothing I can do. Now there is, but there's been a bunch of other things we've been dealing with in the city that take much higher, they have a much quicker impact to us than this. That's why I haven't done anything. I can't speak for everybody else.
And, and I just would say, you know, I know where you're coming from, I understand that. But again, two things, I think, one, I mean, every decision you make virtually, you know, is, there's an, there's an exchange of information between your constituents and you, you know, whether it's sidewalks or, you know, the development at Siemens or whatever, there's an exchange. Somehow or another, this is bothersome to me at least, to be kind of told, trust us, we're making the best decision we can. We can't tell you anything about it, but just trust us. I mean, that, that seems to me to be not democratic. You know, it's like trusting the king to make the right decision in the Middle Ages. He might, he might not, depending upon who he is. So that, I think, is problematic. And then number two, the planning process isn't going to mean you're going to jump into doing something drastic like, you know, building a solar field or, you know, something like that. But incrementally, there should be opportunities, there could be opportunities when renewables might be a feasible thing to integrate into the portfolio, even with our 55 megawatts of power. But we don't know possibly when those options, when those opportunities are going to come if we don't plan for them. So if we only say, well, we can't do anything till the plant closes in 2045, so we'll start working on it in 2040 to deal with the problem, or the plant doesn't close and the contract goes to 2056, so we'll just wait till 2050 to do it. By then, the world is going to be passing us by in terms of what technologies and opportunities and monetary grants and programs and everything else, that it's going to be too late for us to do that, to handle it. So that's, I think, what I see in the value of a plan. Not that the plan is going to be made and you're automatically going to change how you do things, but it's going to reset your mind to think, oh, when this happens, we can, then we can change. Oh, now there's battery storage that is reliable. We should think about adding this or that so that we can utilize it. That's, that's what a plan, that's what an Integrated Resource Plan does.
I don't think anybody was planning on waiting until 2040.
Okay.
I certainly wasn't waiting until 2040, but like I said, there have been more urgent things. I'm glad that you have a passion for this. I know Abby has a passion for this and several on council do, and I'm glad. I'm glad that there's, that there's going to be people continuing this and continue to advocate for it. But I don't think any, I certainly wouldn't have waited for, you know, another decade to start talking about this, but our hand was just forced recently. And go look at our agendas, it's not like we're just sitting around here doing nothing.
I know, I know.
We've got plenty going on.
I absolutely know.
So I think that's really kind of what's going, in my opinion, that's what's going on. And like I said, I'd be all for it. Let's start talking about it. If I find out that it's, hey, you know, a plan is going to cost us, you know, $2 million to execute, then I'm going to say, okay, well, how do we do this with other communities that are part of NIPA or whatever it happens to be so that we can get a little bit more bang for the buck because we're all in similar situations? We're just in the worst, and that, and that kind of stinks. But we're not going to, I don't think anybody around here was planning on waiting to the last minute to say, oh, okay, yeah, go by that. Because that's, I mean, essentially, we're in the position we're in because there wasn't enough information and people recognize that.
Right. And as I've, I've said to many of you, especially when I've met with you one-on-one, I understand fully that you have a lot of things on your plate, absolutely a lot. And I also understand that our electric system works. And so you have this plate full and something that works. You're going to look at the plate full, not at something that works. But what has happened, I think, and CJ has partly been part of that, is this whole climate change issue has come to the forefront, and it is really telling us what has worked all these years is not good enough anymore. And we have to think in terms of change. And change is going to be very hard and it's going to be costly. There's just no way around it. But as one environmental scientist I heard speak a couple of weeks ago, he said, if you think that mitigation costs are a lot or are going to cost too much, if you do nothing to mitigate these problems, the cost of adapting to problems is going to be far more expensive. And, you know, and I think we do need to bite those bullets and, you know, start working on those start working on those problems. And that's my only goal here. That is my only goal, is that you be conscious of what's going on and what needs to be done. I do think that the bills, the three bills move the, the state, including us, if they happen to pass, in the right direction. So that's my opinion, though, okay?
And I guess one more thing that I, that I, my understanding of the bill, and again, I'm not a lawyer, you read these things, it feels like you have to be a lawyer to read them, is that if our, we would do a plan, and if our plan, plan wasn't approved, then we would have to replan or adopt a different plan or some, that's the way I understand it to be. And that's where the additional cost comes in, because it's like, no, your plan is not approved. Now what?
Oh, I, I don't, I did not read any approval part of that bill. There was no approval part. It was, it had to be filed with the Illinois Power Agency. The Illinois Power Agency opens it up for two stakeholder meetings, one via the internet and one, I believe, in Springfield. There would be a period of comments. Comments then are collected by the agency and sent back to city council to review and then determine whether the plan needs to be adjusted, changed, something deleted, something added. But that, that would be within the control of the city council to determine whether those changes would be made or not, you know, possibly depending upon where those comments came from, you know, whether they came from some company downstate as opposed to a Batavia resident. But then, once the plan was, you know, once you considered those comments and then finalized it, then that just gets filed with the Illinois Power Agency, and that's what your plan is for that three-year period. I did not see or read in that bill, or in 36, 37, the Senate bill, which they're exactly the same, anything that said that there was an approval process from the Illinois Power Agency. It, it, it acts primarily as a facilitator and a repository.
Okay, I'll have to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I was just thinking, with, with that, if, if there is not quite that same, that concept of approval, would, would it just be thinking of making sure it meets all of the reporting requirements? Or actual planning, I think, is kind of the differentiator there, if there is a risk of it being kind of brought back. Like, if there is any language in there, and I don't strictly recall that either, but it's a long bill, I would need to reread to check, would it just be a case of ensuring that it met all the reporting requirements kind of thing, as opposed to the actual plan, portion of the plan? As in, what, what actions does the city wish to take kind of thing? So just like a minimum threshold of information provided? Would that be, would that be perhaps that you might be referring to? Yeah, I need to check that myself again.
Guys, that's on page 14 of HB 5021, and Susan was correct that, sorry, I don't have my video on. Susan is correct that it is just about the agency being a way for the process to happen back and forth. I don't see anything in that legislation either that dictates anything, they're just a facilitator. That's it. But that's, that's the page number, 14, when you're reading through the actual legislation, HB 5021. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just make one more comment to insert reality into that scenario. I can't imagine the Illinois Environmental Council appearing before the Illinois Power Agency, making, making comments, or, you know, saying, we object to this, we object to this. Then it goes back to city council, and city council then makes their decision, and everyone's just happy, and it gets filed, and that's the end of it. I, I, I just don't see how that scenario plays out, because the Illinois Environmental Council and many others generally don't just, oh, well, you guys made your decision, we're going to move on now. They generally don't do that.
Again, that-
I'd be happy to post the, I could post it in chat if that would also be helpful. The Illinois Environmental Council is not involved in any of the process at all. So I'm not sure where that-
Oh, not involved in the process, but they certainly could appear at the public meetings and make comments.
Yeah, I, anyone can. But would you like me to post it into chat? Would that be helpful? I don't know if you guys can see it.
The only thing we saw in chat tonight was Jen saying she had to log out.
I can do it now if you want me to, and then I'm going to need to sign off, but I'll go ahead and do that, so it's there for all of you, if you can, if you can access.
Okay. We do have a few other things on the agenda tonight, so is there any more on this for discussion for tonight? And then I think, you know, at least having several people in, in the room and online that are involved in, you know, going through this at the level of, you know, where the bills are being written or changed or modified, I think it was good to have that contact. And, you know, I think we should definitely make sure that, you know, we keep that dialogue open, depending on what's going on with these bills downstate and where that goes, and make sure that we stay on top of it, so that we do keep an open dialogue and know what's going on and know, or make our, you know, positions known on both sides of it, good and bad, that we see in, in the bills, and make sure that we constantly, you know, keep input on this.
Are we putting a summary document together to put in writing to send to our legislators?
Are there matters that a majority of you would like to support as part of those legis-, I think that's what Gary was trying to get at, and while he had ones and twos of some items that he addressed in the memo, that as a body, you have not adopted that as your policy?
So, I could, I mean, my thought on this is, I'm, I'm fine, I'm, oh, my thought on this is that I'm fine with sending some type of a summary of the things that we think are good and bad, but I still maintain the position that if we're going to send something along, you need to have a direction. We're either opposed to it as it's, we're either opposed or we're not opposed. And I mean, there's only one bill that it looks like that we started out a long, long time ago, we started talking about this, it looks like it's even still going, that's 5021. And as it's drafted, my position is, I oppose it. And I think that we can send along things that we like about it, but we have to say we oppose it. And then you can say, but you know what, if you guys want to redo it, here's some things we like, here's what we don't like. But I mean, otherwise, what's the, what's the point? I mean, you're sending something along saying, yeah, we like some of these things, we don't like some of these things.
We did.
And they're going to say, okay, great, great. But we have to have a direction as to, if you want the bill passed or not passed.
We did that last week. We, we voted to oppose it, and we sent a letter already, and then we had this follow-up discussion to have more details.
What I'm saying is that we can send along what we like and don't like, as long as we still maintain the position that we oppose it as drafted.
So Gary, you have some items that individuals on council shared that were items they felt they could support in these bills, correct?
I think you summarized it perfectly about five minutes ago, that, that per my memo, I, I have several ones and twos and threes. I don't know that I have any eights.
I apologize, I haven't sent anything, so I'll still send mine.
Besides, maybe after tonight's conversation, perhaps integrated resource planning might be, might be a vast majority. I don't think there was anyone voicing objection to that.
Maybe now that we've had the conversation-
So maybe what we could do is, once we collect those items from city council, then we can bring that back to a meeting and get direction from you, because I think if you're, if you're voting on items like that, we should probably do it at a public meeting and see if there is majority consensus, that that's something that this body would like to, you know, let people know that that's something that we favor.
I think that would be the good way to do it.
I agree.
Okay. Then that's what we should do. We'll do that at an upcoming county meeting.
Right. Go to the end of May. A lot on the docket.
Well, that's why I say we have to stay current, know what's going on. If something happens, then maybe it's all of us have to voice our own opinions right away, or we have to add it to a, you know, a one-issue meeting after a committee, or after a city council meeting, to be able to get something and get it downstate. So that's, I think, the way we will have to handle it.
So if you could get us your comments, maybe by next Friday, and we'll consider whatever we've received by that point to be the full complement.
All right, then let's move on to project status.
We learned of an opportunity last week, one of these congressionally-directed spending, which is the grant opportunity that in the past we got for the food pantry, the $3 million to find a new home for them. These things come up so fast, I'll tell you. Max, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? It was Wednesday. And the application had to be submitted by close of business on Friday. So we basically had 48 hours to put together an application, and we did it to support the bike trail expansion along the river near the wastewater treatment plants, because that is one that last year, we put in an application with Congressman Foster and Congressman Krishnamurti. Unfortunately, we did not receive the, the grant funds, but I'm hopeful that with a mere 48 hours to apply for Senator Duckworth's opportunity, that maybe there weren't as many who might be able to have availed themselves of that opportunity. So fingers crossed.
Well, that's a two-for-one, because it also is bank stabilization around-
Exactly.
-huge infrastructure for us.
Yes.
It's a wastewater treatment plant, plus gets the, a permanent, good location for the bike path.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we asked for $7 million?
We, we asked for 8.16. That, the original estimate from, I think, 2022 was around six and a half. We added roughly 20%, which is inflation, and we told them that the minimum that we would need to go forward with the project would be around 6 million. And if and when it does actually get approved by the Congress, there may be some matching funds that we'll have to put up, but it will pale in comparison to what the federal government would be providing for that project.
Great. Also, Max has begun to organize the forming of an artificial intelligence advisory committee. It's part of our strategic plan as well, to develop best practices in the use of AI in city government. And so we look forward to, you know, a very safe and effective experimentation with this new technology, but it can definitely help us create more efficiency in our jobs here. We also have received seven responses to the police space needs analysis RFQ. So Friday, staff is going to sit down and just parse through those seven responses and see if we can't narrow them down. And then we plan to bring finalist firms to a cow in mid-May. Also, Max, Lori, Anthony, and Scott are going to be meeting with the Chamber and Main Street to discuss a business pulse survey utilizing the Qualtrics software. We hope to be able to put a business pulse survey out into the community and get feedback from all types of businesses within our community, and then to repeat that on a periodic basis so that we can gauge overall how people feel it is to do business in the city of Batavia. In community and economic development, the Plan Commission is going to be having another review session of the Ashton Ridge development tomorrow. And then the Plan Commission will hold a public hearing on the downtown plan on April 17th. It's an open meeting, and anyone is welcome to attend. On April 4th, Anthony and Margaret Perot from the Chamber of Commerce attended the 2024 Economic Development Outlook Networking and Business Expo in Oak Brook. And in the Police Department, on Friday, April 12th, Elder Services Officer Liz Webb and Mayor Schelke will be giving presentations at Windmill Manor. The mayor will present a brief history of unique Batavia events, and ESO Webb has a slideshow on how seniors can protect themselves from fraud. And then in Public Works, we have received our new emergency backup generator. This was purchased with the DCEO grant that the city received. It's been installed on the exterior of the building, but there's also considerable internal electric work that needed to be completed for that. So we're on schedule to be completed prior to June, which is the date that's established in the grant as the, the deadline for completing work, but we are on track to do that. So it's been over a month now since the Public Works started using the new hybrid vehicles, and staff reports they've been able to drive around the city pretty much primarily on electric, and they've really used very little gas. So that has really been beneficial, and they're very useful and easy to use, so. And also, we've hit a, our, one of our first speed bumps in the construction on the Prairie and Wilson project. An underground storage tank has been discovered in the right-of-way, and so Nycor's utility relocation has been delayed as a result. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
What kind of storage tank was it?
It is probably associated with the former gas station-
Oh.
-that was located at that corner.
So what, the southwest corner, then?
North-east.
North-east?
Yeah.
So the northeast one, okay. Did it crumble when it came out of the ground, or was it intact?
I think it's still in there.
Oh, it is.
It's 10, 15 feet.
So it's still there, are we removing it, or are we filling it?
It's, it's in the city right of us, so we have to.
We have to remove it, okay. I didn't know if it was, if it was something you could empty out and fill, or if you're going to have to remove it.
No, so the process is you call the state fire marshal, and he comes and look at it with an environmental consultant, and they decide what needs to be done. But typically, they would ask you to remove.
Right.
The property owner at that north this corner, he also informed us, he has three more within his property, and he was asking us to remove those. We said no, because it's in the private property, and these things cost a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
But Rahab, there is a program through IEPA for leaking underground storage tank removal, right, that can provide private property owners with reimbursement for the costs. Is that what 24 North Batavia Avenue tapped into? Do you know?
I'm not a-
Okay, not familiar, okay. So I've recommended them to that program in the past, that they should investigate that.
Okay. All right, anybody have any others?
I have a quick one.
Abby?
There's another state bill being discussed this week in the House Transportation Committee on Vehicles and Safety. This would lower the default speed limit in urban areas from 30 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour, something that we've been talking about and considering. So if the state could just sweep and do that, then that would save us in traffic studies. They're requesting witness slips before Thursday at 11, Thursday at 10:00 a.m. So if anybody's interested, I can send around that link to-
Do you have the number of the bill, or?
Yes, House Bill 3530.
You said 30 to 20, or 30 to 25?
From 30 to 20.
If no other others, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for land acquisition and a discussion of contracts relating to the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity.
It's moved.
Second. Motion by Sulfah, second by Ure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?